Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Savigny, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the July 8, 2020 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. This will be a hybrid meeting in which some Board members are present in the boardroom. However, some Board members and staff will be participating virtually. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, the public will not be able to attend the meeting with the exception of those who wish to speak during citizen participation. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:00 PM and again at 6:30 PM. Speakers will be allowed in the meeting room individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communications about public comment for this meeting. The Board of Education will also continue taking public comment related to tonight's agenda items through alternate means. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Comments received will be posted on the website. For Board members and staff who are participating in the virtual meeting, I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, and with that, I will start with the approval of the agenda. Board members, do we have a motion? Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board members, any comments or questions about the agenda? I know that we have a couple of items that we would like to move around a little bit based on current circumstances. So I'll make a motion for each one of those and if we can then get a second and discuss it. So, Board members, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. The first one is for the second set of public comment, which would come under Section 7A. The way we would like to address that is that we had publicized that public comment for the second session would be at 6:30. So what we're, how we would like to address that tonight is that wherever we are at 6:30 in the agenda, if we have speakers waiting in the hallway to come in and address the Board, we'll stop the agenda at that point and allow those speakers to come in. So a little bit of a modified moving agenda for that item. I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey, for the second. Board members, any other comments or questions about that item? No? Everyone okay with that? Okay, and then the second item that I would like to make a motion for is that we strike item 6E from the agenda. And Dr. Lockard, could you make some comments? Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a motion? Do I have a second for that motion? A second, Ms. Pataglia, thank you. Dr. Lockard, can you make some comments about what the situation is with that?
Sure. We have reached a tentative agreement with CCEA. We're very excited about that. Due to the timeline for ratification, we were hoping we'd be able to get that to this evening's meeting, but we're going to push that to the next, next meeting, assuming ratification. So again, it's just a timeline issue at this point. We're happy to report that we do have a tentative agreement. So we hope to bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Board members, any other comments or revisions that we want to make on the agenda for this evening, other than those two items? No? Okay, then I will call for the vote on the approval of the agenda as amended. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and now we can move on to item 1D, which is the approval of the minutes. The first one is I need a motion to approve the unapproved virtual Board meeting minutes for June 20, 2020. Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board members, any comments or revisions for the June 20 minutes?
Yes, I would like to look on page 3 of the minutes. And I would like to look at the last sentence in the first paragraph. It says, and finally, Dr. Dorsey added, "that even though she did not participate in the Black Lives Matter protests, she did have some people drive by her home, and she supported their vision." I'd like to strike "did have some people drive by her home" and correct it to, "and finally, Dr. Dorsey added, 'that even though she did not participate in the Black Lives Matter protests, she drove by the protest in front of the Carroll County Public Library on Main Street in Westminster to encourage and support those who are participating.'"
And Dr. Dorsey, would you be able to send that, that piece in writing to Ms. Lucchito so that we can capture that accurately in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to make a comment on sheet 2, where it says, "First term will expire by January 30, 2021." My term will expire, I believe, in 2022.
Yes, I believe that's correct. We'll make that change as well.
Devanchi, I'm sorry, could you, could you say where that was again?
Where was that, Devanchi?
On page 2, the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Gotcha.
Oh, gotcha, okay, I'll change it.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Board members, before we go any further, I realize that there, there was a typo on the agenda. These are actually the Board meeting minutes for June 10, although it says June 20 on the agenda. So just for the purpose of getting this accurately, can I get a motion to approve the unapproved virtual Board meeting minutes for June 10, 2020? Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler, thank you very much. Okay, Board members, any other comments or revisions to this set of minutes?
Okay, I meant to double-check the name of the person on page 6 who received the Dylan Cole Award. I, I would want to double-check, is it Sarah Watcher or Wafter?
I believe it was Watcher. I'll double-check that.
It is Watcher, okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Board members, any other comments or revisions to the June 10 minutes? No? Then with that, I will call for the vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. Now, Board members, I need a motion to approve the unapproved virtual Board meeting minutes for June 24, 2020. Moved by Ms. Pataglia and seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Okay, Board members, any comments or revisions to this set of minutes? I'm not hearing anything, so with that, I will call for the vote on the approval of the minutes as submitted. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, so now we will move to the public participation section. And Ms. Herbert, if you would like to read the guidelines.
Absolutely. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communications about public comments for this meeting. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent/Board reserve the right to correct misinformation, present it as factual, after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the action or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes has passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting, which is 6:30 tonight. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence and return to the audience. The public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. And our first person tonight is Kim Stewart.
I ask that my three minutes begin now. "The definition of courage," from Merriam-Webster Dictionary. "Mental or moral strength, to venture, persevere, and withstand danger, fear, or difficulty. In short, bravery. Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you and challenge you to call forth the courage required at this time to fight for our children. Distance learning is a disaster with a large percentage of kids not even logging in or participating. The Brookings Institute suggests the loss of learning during the extraordinary systemic crisis of World War II still had negative impact on former students 40 years later. Other studies have shown when students miss school due to natural disasters or prolonged teacher strikes, they are less likely to earn a degree, more likely to be unemployed, and they earn less money on average. American children are already academically behind in the world as it is. The potential future consequences to our children and our society as a whole from learning loss are enormous, not to mention the psychological, mental, and emotional damage done to children who are denied the social opportunities school provides. Many are choosing to withdraw from public schools. Our children have suffered enough. I'm sure you've all heard the statistics this week. Children are not at risk of getting or transmitting the coronavirus. In fact, they are more likely to get it from a parent than to transmit it due to the low viral load children carry. Contract tracing in several countries have failed to locate a single case of child-to-adult infection. Twenty-two countries in Europe have opened schools with no spike in cases. The evidence does not warrant inflicting academic and social harm to children and society. The useful statistic to look at is the consistent falling fatality rate, not the number of cases. We must not be deceived by the number of cases. While any death of a child is tragic, there were 169 pediatric deaths from the seasonal flu, whereas pediatric deaths from COVID are so low they are statistically insignificant. Again, the shutdown of schools and the requiring of impractical restrictions is simply unwarranted and unacceptable. Fear has run amok, and we as parents, taxpayers, Board members, and human beings must be adults, which means fighting for our children, not fighting other adults about political control. This has clearly become a battle for control with our children being used in the middle. Unacceptable. I urge you to stand up to superintendents, state boards, teachers' unions, and our tyrannical governor. We have a moral obligation to our children. The cure is far worse than the disease. And I leave you with a quote from one of the most courageous human beings in human history, John Adams, who said, "It should be your care, therefore, and mine, to elevate the minds of our children and exalt their courage. If we suffer their minds to grovel and creep in infancy, they will grovel all their lives." Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next will be Kelly McDonough, CCEA Employee Group.
Thank you for coming tonight. I think it's sticking a little bit. Hello, Superintendent, Board members, Commissioner, I'm assuming there's one somewhere. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak on behalf of CCEA. I'm Kelly McDonough, Vice President of CCEA, and tonight I am here to speak specifically on behalf of our Back to School Committee, which was made up of representatives from a large variety of certificated positions in CCPS, and actually also one non-certificated position in CCPS, who was also on the Case Back at School Committee. We met several times since the end of school to produce a report much like your three workgroups. Our report consists of a set of specific guiding expectations to supplement your workgroup reports based on frontline employee input. Our report goes into far too much detail and depth to go into all of its content in my comments right now. I'll hit on some of its key points, however, and if you have not already received it via email, you should shortly. Over 700 of our members participated in a CCEA survey last week, where four different reopening scenarios were presented: a full reopen, a 50% capacity reopen, a 25% capacity reopen, and a fully virtual reopen. And our members were asked to rate their comfort level on a Likert scale. A follow-up question was then asked regarding their likelihood of taking leave, resigning, or retiring in each of those scenarios, except the fully virtual reopen. A staggering 49.8% of our members indicated that they were either very uncomfortable or uncomfortable returning to work in a full reopen. Additionally, 9.9, or 71, teachers then indicated that they were very likely or likely to take leave, retire, or resign in that fully reopened scenario. The numbers were very similar for a 50% capacity reopening scenario. Many of our members indicated that they felt like the initial survey that came out from you, they thought that it was similar to the, like, the committing, I can't think of what it's called, but, you know, in the spring when you have to commit, and therefore, they weren't honest, which is why we sent out our own survey. In a 25% capacity reopening scenario, 32% of the respondents felt uncomfortable returning, and 6.6, or 47, teachers said that they were likely to take leave, retire, or resign. Only 19.5% of the respondents felt uncomfortable returning to an all-virtual school environment. The last question we asked on the survey was, "What are your top three concerns for the fall?" Overwhelmingly, the top three concerns people listed had to do with, one, their health and their, their health and their safety. That included their own health, their family's health, the student's health, and cleaning and safety protocols needed to protect people's health. Number two was the unwieldy workload they anticipated while trying to teach, teach, sorry, both virtually and face-to-face. And number three, which about 100 teachers mentioned, concerns about the cost, safety, and logistics of childcare for their own children, and how that is going to be a barrier for them to return to work. While each of your workgroup's reports was very thorough, for sure, we do feel as though our report touches on some additional and more specific logistical concerns that need to be considered and planned for prior to any face-to-face teaching. For example, as the frontline employees, clear, specific guidelines must be provided to us on how we are going to keep our students and ourselves safe when we know they will not remain six feet apart, they will not have their own supplies, and we're already going to be busier than weathermen during a tornado, because we're going to be moving ourselves and our materials from classroom to classroom. So what do we do when someone intentionally violates the CDC guidelines? Who is disinfecting the pencils or textbooks that were just shared? Or is the budget for classroom supplies going up so that we can just provide an endless supply of pencils to students? There were some students in certain classes who needed a pencil every period, every single solitary day. The custodians will not have time to disinfect shared supplies like pencils and textbooks, scissors and glue. We will not have time. We'll be pushing our carts to the next classroom and planning both face-to-face and virtual instruction. How will this work? For example, we already know that at times some students will remove their masks or touch other students or staff intentionally. CCPS needs to provide staff with very specific centralized instruction on what actions to take in that situation to maintain safety. This guidance has not been provided yet in any of your reports. Also, some of the measures described in the CCPS workgroup reports fail to address logistics adequately. For example, students exhibiting symptoms are to be placed in an identified isolation area or maybe in the house suite. However, we can reasonably guess that staff may at times refer large numbers of students for coughing, sneezing, and other symptoms. What's the plan for when the house suite and isolation rooms are at capacity or are overwhelmed? As another example, it's being planned for students to eat in classrooms. This means food and saliva will be on classroom desks and materials. What personnel and what time are being used to clean these classrooms after meals and before instruction resumes? What personnel will be in poorly ventilated rooms full of unmasked students talking and laughing and chewing for an extended period of time with only a cloth mask that protects the students from the employee but not the staff member? And who wants that job? Who wants to assume that risk? Because you are not paying anyone enough to risk their health. We do not yet know the long-term consequences of COVID. I also want to echo something that Diane Deal will mention to you, that both teachers and support staff agree, that CCPS needs to utilize support staff more fully and appropriately to bear the increasing workload ahead. So many IAs were left waiting, wanting to help teachers in the spring, but neither they nor we were given sufficient guidance on how they could be involved. Although I'm very happy to see in the PD portal that there are many professional development opportunities currently offered for IAs on how they can be of use, but I don't know how much that's being publicized. I only know, because I stalk the PD portal on a daily basis to see what training is available for me to be prepared for blended learning. And as of right now, there's 0.0 PD in there for that. I hear it's coming, but I have time now. August is the Sunday night of summer, and I don't want to wait until then. That's a personal aside, not part of my report, sorry. Just want to let you know, I have an anxiety attack every day about it. And so every day, I stalk the PD portal, and every day, there's 0.0 blended instruction PD in there. Just an aside, okay, sorry. I know all of us want nothing more than for things to go back to normal. The reality is, we are going back to face-to-face instruction under conditions where we are trying to keep ourselves and our students safe. If safety measures are being implemented with fidelity, this will take time away from face-to-face instruction that occurs. But those measures must be carefully and intentionally planned. Additionally, we have to anticipate all the hiccups that will invariably occur and intentionally planned for how those will be handled as well. As frontline educators, we are experts at anticipating hiccups. We have tried to think of as many as we could in the time that we had, and we knew that there were a million more, but we literally ran out of time. But we are presenting them to you in our report because lies are at stake, ours and our students'. Thank you so much for the extended time you gave me.
Thank you. And next, we have Bobby Franchella.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Bobby Franchella. I am a mom of four in the Carroll County Public School system. I am also a substitute teacher in the Carroll County Public School system. I also represent a school, a schools, forgive me. I also represent an organization called Reopen Maryland Schools on Facebook. We thank you today for taking the time to hear us. As lots and lots of information comes out, a lot of other counties aren't affording us this opportunity. So thank you, thank you for listening, thank you for being here for us. The decisions that you have to make can't be easy. There's so many opposing sides. Our, our group is about putting the kids first. As a parent, as a substitute teacher, and as a member of this group, we'd want these kids back in school, five days a week, no masks. Little distancing is possible for their mental health. Kids need socialization. They need their teachers. They need to be personally accountable to the people in front of them. It is the only way to move forward. No one in our group is ignoring COVID. COVID is here. It is an illness, like so many others. But we have seen, as it's come out in the last several weeks, the information that we have now is not the information that we had when we all went home in March. When we all went home in March, it was scary, right? It was scary. My kids were scared, I was scared. We now know that these kids do not have the likelihood of getting this virus as opposed to older, older age groups. They are also not likely to transmit it to adults. Now, that being said, in a perfect world, there's no reason that they shouldn't go back normally, on their buses, play with their friends. I'm a substitute teacher. Can you imagine, I have one who's about to go into kindergarten. Can you imagine, five years old, "No, stay, stay, stay far back. Don't, don't touch your friends. Oh, please put that mask back on." It's not plausible. Please don't make these teachers and these administrators COVID police. Let them do their job. Let them help these kids learn unfettered. Now, I know there are people who are super nervous about this, and there are people with pre-existing conditions. There are people that are in an age group that this is much more dangerous for. No one's ignoring that. We have gotten a start on the distance learning, on the virtual learning. I also know that the governor has put a lot of money towards distance learning very, very recently, especially in rural areas like this. very recently, especially in rural areas like this. If there are teachers that are not comfortable, that are scared, that they're worried about their health, those teachers should be matched with the kids whose parents aren't comfortable sending them back.
Bobby, when you, just trying to finish your thoughts.
Forgive me, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's fine. But just finish your thought.
Let the teachers teach. Let the kids go back to school. Nobody's ignoring this. But it can be handled where our kids' mental health and their happiness and the warmth that comes from school can be the way it always was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And next, we have Diane Deal. And she is speaking on CASE Employee Group.
Hi, I got to defog a minute. I apologize. Sorry. Good evening, Dr. Lockard, board members, and I saw you out there, Commissioner Frazier. My name is Diane Deal, and I am the president of CASE, representing secretary clerical, LPNs, and instructional assistants. I would first like to thank you for recognizing CASE as a stakeholder in the process of reopening schools. Including education support professionals in the planning process acknowledges the importance and critical roles we have in the education of our students. Today, you should have received a document from CASE regarding our suggestions, feedback, and concerns for the reopening of our school system. Earlier this spring, prior to being named a stakeholder group, CASE formed a formal committee to discuss reopening. The committee was chaired by Cindy Porter and included approximately a dozen CASE members who met almost weekly. These conversations were very honest, sometimes emotional, and primarily focused on how CASE employees can best support our students during these challenging times. I want to share our mission statement from this committee that came out of these meetings because we're very proud of this. Our mission statement is to look proactively at Carroll County Public Schools' educational reentry process for the 2020-2021 school year in accordance with state mandated guidelines and CDC recommendations in order to provide potential actions that will benefit student learning and engagement by utilizing the strength of all employees in a socially responsible and safe manner and to address any concerns with CCPS recommendations. The members of CASE request three things as we move forward. First, that you make sure to communicate and inform ESPs on the ongoing changes to our schools, even though we understand the continual change that is occurring. More emails is better than none. Second, that we all work together to make sure safety is a priority for all students and staff. And finally, that we work to maximize our ESP's ability to educate and support our students consistently across our school system. While we understand many things had to be decided quickly for virtual learning, almost every ESP will tell you they were constantly looking for ways to be more involved with our students. Your ESPs maintain a wealth of talent and expertise that needs to be utilized. If our plan for students is going to even have a chance of working, ESPs need to be involved in all aspects of our students' education. While we will always defend our negotiated agreement and contract, we are ready to do what is needed for our students. This has always been our mission as educators, and it will not change. I thank you for your time and your continued collaboration as to how we move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Diane.
And our sixth one today is Christina Olson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm the founder of Return to Learn Maryland Schools, an advocacy group focused on returning our children to school. I speak for our members when I say that school must be reopened in the fall without impractical restrictions. I'm entrusted daily by our members with raw emotion and the reality of their absolutely heartbreaking situations. I'm told about once-happy children receiving emergency evaluation for suicidal ideation. Teachers confide in me the stories of the overwhelming effects of trying to teach online while teaching and caring for their own children. Working families express the stress, anxiety, and devastating effects trying to teach their children in addition to performing their essential job duties. Single mothers have cried as they told me they lost their job while they tried to juggle teaching and providing for their children while working. My own children, when asked what the hardest part of remote learning was for them, they said they didn't have anyone to help them. Imagine if my own children say that, what are the children that we aren't hearing from saying? How are they feeling? While these stories may seem extreme, I assure you they're not. They're the stories I hear over and over daily. I lay awake at night with these stories in concern and compassion for the stories that I'm not hearing. The stories of the children who have no one advocating for them. Stories of the children who have been forgotten because they don't have access to device or internet. Stories of the children who are living silently in fear when school used to provide them a safe place. I'm not an advocate. I'm not a politician. I'm not a medical expert. I'm just a mother who can't sit idly while our children suffer. We have entrusted you as our elected leaders with the decision-making ability to return our children to schools. I've heard lots of excuses as to why this can't happen, but I haven't heard the solutions. I'm here today to ask you, our representatives, what you're going to do to help us. I'm asking you how we can partnership with you to get students back to school. I'm asking you to have the courage to stand up to our governor and state unions with science and facts supporting reopening school. I'm asking you to make sure our families and students have a bigger voice in this decision. I'm sure you saw the White House National Dialogue on reopening schools yesterday. There was a united consensus that schools must be reopened for learning. In the dialogue, the CDC specifically stated, quote, "We did not recommend that schools be closed, and we didn't see the schools needed to be closed." Quote, "We need to plan schools with the plan for COVID-19 is going to occur." Quote, most important, our CDC guidance is guidance. When it comes to reopening our schools, nobody should hide behind CDC guidance as a way to not reopen schools. Several experts, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, Dr. Atlas, Dr. Kostaki, Dr. Victory, and many, many more, have spoken about our children in school and the detrimental effects if they are not. Today, there's a total of one hundred and thirty-six people.
Excuse me, just finish your thoughts, please.
The other lady that went that was from the union had like nine minutes.
Yep, they're allowed to.
Okay, so I have about three more sentences. The CDC guidance that when it comes to reopening our school should not be hidden behind. Several experts, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, agree that our children need to be schooled. Today, there's a total of one hundred and thirty-six ICU COVID patients in the entire state of Maryland. There are below four hundred people hospitalized for COVID in the state of Maryland, and some of them are hospitalized for other causes. Our children are our future, and their future depends on the decisions that you are entrusted to make. Stand with us, fight with us, and do not allow our children to be used as political pawns by our government officials and held hostage by our unions. We, the people, are watching you. Since three minutes isn't nearly enough, obviously, I've brought lots of things for you to read and to consider.
Thank you. Yes, leave them there on the table for us, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, and next we have Katie Kirby.
I did bring handouts, I'll just leave those on the podium, I think I just heard. Good evening. I'm Katie Kirby, executive director and founder of Together, I'm sorry, can I take this off? Good evening, I'm Katie Kirby, the executive director and founder at Together We Own It, a local nonprofit. As a leader, I have demonstrated experience working with elementary, middle, and high school students as a one-on-one mentor and program coordinator. As a Carroll County native and previously a substitute teacher for Carroll County Public Schools, I have a strong commitment to driving change for underserved youth in our community. I'm here today to discuss Together We Own It's recommendation to ensure equity in distance learning. So many of our students are begging for another solution. Many students are facing additional challenges at home that make distance learning nearly impossible. A laptop cannot replace the necessary relationships that our children need to thrive. At Together We Own It, we serve children and families impacted by trauma, poverty, and mental health. All of the youth in our program score forty percent or higher on a risk needs assessment analyzing education, housing, mental health, and substance use. Our youth are often homeless, in foster care, struggling with mental health. They often come from homes filled with abuse and neglect. The school day for so many is the only place that these children can seek adult support, build positive relationships, and find opportunities to unlock their full potential. Ensuring that all kids have access to technology at home is equality, but providing children with difficult circumstances additional support and stability is equity. Our plan to bring an equitable approach to distance learning in Carroll County includes the following three steps. For our gifted and mainstream students, we recommend a flexible, independent learning model. Five days of enhanced distance learning education each week with their teachers, similar to what they've received in the past, past few months. This leaves the largest majority of your students' population and your educators at home where they're the safest. The second model is a daily in-school learning model. We recommend reserving this model for our higher-needs students, those involved in special education. This would offer four days of in-school education with qualified special education teachers, one day of distance learning each week, and a day for sanitizing. The third model, which is where we come into play, is our blended learning model. This model is best utilized for those identified at-risk students. This model offers five days of enhanced distance learning each week with their teachers, just as the majority of your students would receive. However, it goes a step further by providing community organization support, excuse me, support for distance learning guidance and mental health check-ins. Together We Own It is willing to lead a group of organizations such as local churches and other youth-serving agencies to host satellite learning locations where students will be guided through their online education with the support of community volunteers and educators. The purpose of this proposal is to provide strength, opportunity, and structure for our children and families who need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one, Trish Stone.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Just push real hard. There you go.
You tell me when to start.
As soon as you start, then the timer's.
Okay. Hi, guys, I'm Trish Stone. I have four kids, two with special needs, and one left in high school. She is unable one hundred percent to remote learn. I've tried to assist her in that, so has the school. To push a child with her challenges into transitioning to a different type of learning would cause her to regress even more. So I've taken it upon myself to teach her certain things in conversation or reading. So I'm kind of sneaking that in. But there are a lot of kids, like my daughter, who Dr. Salmons spoke of, that struggle and will fall behind, including the support that my daughter has received from the school system. Emotional, social skills will falter. She will fall way behind anyone else. There are a lot of kids like that in her situation. Our group, Return to Learn Maryland Schools, is focused on trying to get the schools open with no restrictions. We feel this is important because from what I'm hearing and just sample photos and things of how the school system will be, I believe that our school systems, if set up in that kind of way, emulate a prison. This is no way for our kids to go back to school. I wanted to say that there was a quote from the whitehouse.org conference yesterday that says, "Don't let our fears inhibit the learning and growth of our children." That's all I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I would just like to specifically thank everyone who came out this evening to make the comments. Looks like we kind of combined everyone, so we had employee groups mixed in with some of the citizen participation.
I think we should separate those, maybe.
Yeah.
I need to, because there was a misunderstanding.
So a note for the next sign-up, we'll have regular citizen speakers on one sign-up sheet and then employee group on another.
Right, absolutely.
So we have one follow the other.
Thank you, yes.
And along with that, I want to thank you and all the staff. I know this wasn't easy to do, but I think people were so hungry to get some public input. And you get emails, you get so much other, but this is also a platform for them. I know it wasn't easy tonight, but I think it was well worth it.
Right, and we need to do it.
I agree. I want to thank, I know that there's a lot of effort that went in by staff to try to make this happen, and a lot of ideas and brainstorming, but I think it was worth it, and just want to thank everyone for being able to pull this off tonight. So I guess when we, so now we'll move on to the next section, and again, wherever we are at six-thirty, if we have anyone waiting outside for additional public comment, we'll stop and let them in.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to section three for board member and superintendent updates. And so we'll start off with board member activities and correspondence, and who would like to go first?
Oh, I'm good.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes, I did several things. The first one, I went to the bus patrol meeting out at the Ag Center, and that was very successful. Bus patrol brought in one shiny yellow bus, and they had actual people installing all the important things that go on that bus, and the bus contractors were able to see where they drilled the one hole on the side, and I was there for that. And it was great communication between all groups, between Transportation Department, between the sheriff, between bus patrol and the contractors. So that was a real win-win situation, and I think everybody felt very comfortable when it was all over. I did not stay for the whole installation of everything, but it was just a good day, and they were there for six hours for the input and placing of that bus patrol in the buses. And I think everybody was very happy. The other thing, I was over at Manchester Valley, walking around in the weeds, trying to figure out where to put their new electronic sign. So that is exciting, and they are moving on with that, and now they've got almost all their money, and they're looking for the spot to put it. And the other thing is, I know we've all got a lot of emails, good, bad, and ugly, and phone calls, and that's part of our job, but I got a phone call last night from a parent, Marcy Borner, from Manchester Valley, and she could not go on and thank everyone for doing a fantastic job for graduation. She said it went above and beyond whatever they could expect. They had front row seats. They could take as many pictures as they wanted, and she has a set of twins, and they were able to graduate together, and they made it very special. And it was just nice to hear something positive and how wonderful, and how they wanted to thank everybody for going the extra and making sure that these graduations were a really good, positive event. So I just wanted to shout that out. I knew I had a couple minutes, but we couldn't attend because we were all elsewhere, but I thought that was so nice. So I just like to hear good things.
Ms. Taggart?
I've attended the graduation parades the different communities offered, and of course, just working, staying home like everyone else. I mean, that's what we right now do. Carroll County Fair, it's not the For Each Fair this year, is going to be called the Carroll County Fair. It's still happening the first week of August, and it is not open to the public, but they are still having their livestock auction that Friday. So for anybody that needs food, go buy livestock that Friday. So for anybody that needs food, go buy livestock that Friday at the auction. And then Mr. Kyler nominated me to do 22 push-ups for 22 days. And so I've been, I've been doing that. So thanks for wearing me out.
Yeah, thanks everyone with the emails so far, too. I think, you know, we're getting a good mix of how everyone feels. And unfortunately, you know, we have to wait and see what the governor says, and then what the county says, and then that's how we're able to make a decision on that. So it's going to be hard. But we are listening, so everyone, we want them to know that we are reading and listening to you and all your, you know, we appreciate it.
Thanks. Dr. Dorsey, do you want to go next?
Okay, yes, thank you. Let's see, where do I start? Okay, on June 11th, I participated in one of the courageous conversation sessions, and the participants in that session had an opportunity to share their truths about our current race situation in our land. And there were no right nor wrong responses. There were no judgments. But each person had the opportunity to share their own truth. And it was powerful hearing perspectives of folks. And I just am so thankful that people chose to participate in those sessions. In general, there were seven courageous conversation sessions, and I understand there were over 200 participants across various positions in our school system. So I'm thankful that folks had that opportunity to participate in those sessions. And again, I thank Judy Jones and her staff for leading that initiative for us. On 6/19, our Council for Education that is multicultural met. And during that meeting, we listened as the summary recovery plan for CCPS and some reopening thoughts and challenges with equity were shared. We also discussed and heard information about the community petition that's regarding culturally responsive curricular resources and instruction were shared. And we also discussed the summer virtual learning summit. So that was a worthwhile meeting, I think, for everyone who participated in that. And let's see, I have one more comment here. There is going to be a book club. In fact, the book club has already started during this month of July. And I understand this session, it's a book on, again, discussing race. And I understand the session's filled quickly. There are six sessions with over 20 participants in each, and there are also some individual schools who are having their own sessions. So I have signed up for the Thursday sessions beginning tomorrow and look forward to participating in those. So I thank those who are keeping that initiative right before us so we can continue to move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Mr. Kyler?
Hi, I'm not going to mention a lot of things. Career and Tech did have a committee meeting, and the committee's getting ready to start meeting for East Middle. And I just want to mention briefly, again, thanks for allowing the public comment. And as Carroll County Public Schools always has done, we just need to put the kids first and get them back as much as we can, as safely as we can. And I understand some of the fear in this. I'm in construction, and we were considered essential, so I haven't missed a day of work. There's been virtual meetings, job site meetings, and all kinds of stuff. We've had a few people with symptoms who got tested. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had anybody test positive, and we hadn't had to furlough anybody. But it's tough, and it's worrisome, and I fully understand both sides.
Thanks, Mr. Kyler. Davanti, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Greger. I hope everyone had a safe and healthy July 4th weekend. Since my first board meeting last year, I attended the June 24th for updates meeting. Then on June 29th, I met virtually with Ms. Ralzakis to go over the student survey on school in the fall. The meeting lasted well over two hours, and I think we made some real progress on combing through all the questions and making the survey suited to the students' interests. In this meeting, we also discussed use of social media for the SHROB and the creation of a SHROB Advisory Council. One of my main goals coming into this position was to increase communication between the student rep and the students and garner more input from them regarding student issues in the county. I encourage CCPS students to reach out to me on Instagram @CCPSROV or Twitter @CCPS_SROV. On these platforms, I will be posting updates for me regarding board meetings and decisions pertaining to students. For the SHROB Advisory Council, there will be one student from each middle and each high school to represent their school's and students' interests. Students can be on the lookout for applications for the councils once school starts in the fall. In the past few weeks, I was also able to get in touch with smobs and shrubs throughout the state of Maryland. It was wonderful to meet other student leaders from across the state, and we had very enlightening conversations. Among the topics of discussion were student member voting rights, the recent education budget cuts, and a potential statewide smob forum on race and equity. We hope to work together throughout the year on supporting the students in our own counties and throughout the state as well. On another note, AP scores come out for AP students next week, and I just want students to know that regardless of what score appears on the screen, the fact that they took the AP test among all the mayhem of online testing is remarkable and commendable. They should be proud of themselves. Lastly, I would just like to say that the issues regarding race and equity in our county are still prevalent and cannot go unaddressed. Throughout the next month, I want to look towards collaborating with the board, our schools, and our students to foster real conversations and to make good change on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Davanti. Okay, so I'll just speak about, I haven't attended any organized activities, obviously, for the school, but I would like to say, like Ms. Herbert did, about the amount of communication that we're having with the community. It's been absolutely outstanding. We're receiving hundreds of emails at a clip, and I know that every single one of us have been trying to at least read, if not address, every single one of those emails that is coming in. So I appreciate the feedback that's coming from the community. Ms. Herbert, I believe you said there's good, bad, and ugly. I think that we want to hear all opinions from the community.
Absolutely.
But what we even like to hear more is the constructive feedback and thoughts of folks of, you know, how do we make this work? Understanding that our hands are a little bit tied at the state level, but also the fact that we are trying to take advantage of whatever local control we can have over some of these decisions. So it's a very fine line to walk. It's a tough issue to address. We have, we're never going to make everyone happy. I think that's one of the things that's coming through loud and clear. We have so many people on the full spectrum of feelings about COVID-19 and how do we open up in the fall. We're never going to make everybody happy, but we still want to hear what people have to say. And that's why I think the surveys have been so helpful as well in reviewing those results as we're trying our best to put together some reopening plans for the fall and all the contingency plans that have to happen. But I appreciate the community reaching out. I've had parents calling me directly, as I'm sure many of you have as well, on various issues. I've had teachers calling me directly on various issues. And that's how we figure this out. We figure it out together. So please keep the feedback coming, but please keep an open mind and keep it as positive as possible in finding a solution. So thank you, everyone. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Lockard for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Sevigny. I'll echo what you and several other board members have stated. It's the obvious that this is a very challenging, daunting look at the fall. And, you know, student and staff safety is utmost importance. All the concerns we've heard, we understand aspects of all of those things, and that's what makes it so challenging for us. And the piece that you stated, Ms. Sevigny, is that we are required to follow certain requirements. Right now, the state is in stage two or phase two of the governor's reopening plan. And whether we like it or not, in that phase, we couldn't open schools fully even if we decided that today, because we are obligated to follow that and comply with that. Now, I will say to you, just as we heard all kinds of questions tonight, just as we've gotten all those questions and emails, just as our work groups and from some of our associations, the work that they've done, to start to chip away at those questions and find answers to those questions, that is ever-evolving and ever-changing. And we get new information every day, and we hear different information that influences or adjusts or challenges our current thinking. I think that speaks to why the public input is so important, because, just because we may have some requirements, we have to operate within those requirements, but all that input and all that information can help us try to get to the best place for kids and for everyone's safety. As you might remember, just for the viewing public, listening public, we did have a dedicated evening on June 24th. We call those update meetings, where we really started to unpack a lot of those complexities that we're working with and dealing with. We've been really working on this in earnest for a couple of months as we were wrapping up school at the same time for the 1920 school year. So we started that work. We did have a survey. We are sending out another survey to parents. That'll go out later next week. We're refining that. It'll be much more open-ended, lots more opportunity for people to put additional information and feedback. So we heard that. That's something that was needed, and so we'll continue to do that. We have a meeting next Wednesday, another update meeting. We have two such opportunities here in July, where we will be fully dedicating those meetings to the conversation about returning to school. And I think this process is a good one. We're talking about it a little bit, obviously, through our public comments and through board member comments and what I'm saying right now. We do have some business we have to handle tonight, but we're dedicating these nights in July, starting with next, well, started back in June, but again, next week, next Wednesday, to really try to hone in. But again, we're going to be watching very carefully what happens over the course of the next few weeks as well, because, as I said, information changes just about daily. So we appreciate all that feedback, as everyone said. We respect and appreciate and understand all the sides of all of those things, and so our work is challenging. I can't say how appreciative I am of a large group of people working on these issues all the time. That includes our dedicated staff, but we also have all these groups that we've enlisted to help us. You heard from a few of them tonight, but we also have the board's advisory committees, our special education citizens advisory committee, our community advisory committee, our security advisory council, you name it, they're all providing input and weighing in. And also, like I said, with a second survey and additional opportunity for public input and a lot more feedback for this, we will certainly benefit from that moving forward. So as early as probably end of this week, early next week, we'll post some of our draft planning. Again, it's still in draft form, so that's for getting ready for next Wednesday, for the board to start to further unpack those options, see where we are at the state level, and continue our planning moving forward. So I just want to make sure I touched on that. Thank everybody for the hard work in this challenging, challenging time, and know that we're dedicating several evenings as a board, but just about every single day of our lives recently in thinking about and planning for the fall. So we'll do our best there. I do have a couple of good news items I'd like to share. I want to congratulate Karen Sarno, our supervisor of food services. She received the 2019-2020 Director of the Year Award from the Maryland School Nutrition Association. Karen and her staff have worked tirelessly to enhance our food services program, and her many initiatives range from, you know, themed days in our cafeteria to providing Spanish lessons for food service workers, to promoting the Farm to School program. This is just to name a few. She's also involved, members of the Board of Education and Food Service Programs, by presenting detailed information about our programs, examples of typical school meal breakfasts and lunch trays, inviting them to school cafeterias, seeing the kitchen and serving lines, et cetera. Karen has formed partnerships with many of our community groups and organizations to provide meals during the summer months, and this is, I'm just talking about regular times now, to ensure that children continue to receive nutritious meals when school is out in session. But most recently, she's taken the lead in providing almost half a million meals to students during the school closures over these past four months. And so, and she greatly expanded her program during that time. And so we congratulate Karen on a very well-deserved recognition, and she certainly made us all proud. I'd also like to congratulate Linton Springs and Runnymede Elementary Schools for being designated as 2019-2020 Maryland Green Schools by the Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education. Sandy Mount Elementary was recertified for achieving sustainable green school status. The Green School Program Award represents a school-wide commitment to environmental literacy that includes staff, students, and the school community. Maryland Green Schools achieve remarkable environmental accomplishments by conserving water, reducing energy use, recycling materials, et cetera. They also create natural habitats, plant native plants, and clean stream banks to protect the state's water quality. So we're very proud that we have, now have 19 green schools and one green center, that's our outdoor school, here in Carroll County Public Schools, so quite an accomplishment. In May, I reported to you that Evan Warren, 2020 graduate of Westminster High School, received the Maryland Student-Athlete Scholarship from the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. I'm pleased to announce this evening that Evan has gone on to receive the association's scholarship for Section 2. Evan's application was in competition with others from Delaware, Kentucky, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Virginia, and West Virginia, and now will be sent to the National Awards Committee for consideration among the winners from seven other sections. So we continue to congratulate Evan on this terrific accomplishment, and best wishes as he prepares to enter the U.S. Naval Academy. And I've seen some Twitter clips of Evan kicking 60-yard field goals this summer. It's pretty impressive. And a true scholar athlete and a former student representative to the board. So, congratulations. Finally, I'd like to close the evening by expressing my appreciation to the Harold Glenn and Audrey Benson Trumpauer Foundation Scholarship Fund. This fund has awarded scholarships to 67 Carroll County students, including current and previous graduates. Some of those are continuing scholarships. These scholarships support students who exceed the maximum income threshold for government financial aid programs, but who still may have financial need or lack resources to pay for their education. The scholarships include two- and four-year colleges, trade, and technical schools, as well as non-credit certification programs. So we thank the foundation for the many scholarships offered to our students. And that concludes my comments this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. All right, so we don't have any presentations on the docket for tonight and can move directly on to Section 5 for reports. And the first item up is the school construction report. So, Dr. Lockard, do you want to kick us off for that one?
Yes, this is the monthly construction report. There are no major revisions of note, and staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members? Mr. O'Neill, I did want to ask, I know that I had asked you this in person, not in person, over the phone a couple of days ago, but just talking about the state budget cuts that we're hearing about potentially, and whether those might have any impact on Carroll from a school construction perspective.
Yes, thank you, President Sevigny. We did have that conversation, and the cuts that were suggested for education were not approved by the Board of Public Works, so at this point, it's not an immediate conversation. But those that were proposed specifically in the capital area were not programs that would have had a dramatic impact on our school system. Other school systems certainly were part of those programs that were highlighted, but not programs that would have deeply impacted Carroll in any way.
Okay. So we don't have any concerns on the Career and Tech project, or the East Middle project, or any of the other larger projects that we have in the pipeline at the moment?
No, the state's already made an initial commitment to the Career and Tech project under the traditional capital program, and we are still very optimistic, as we've discussed all throughout the spring, that once the General Assembly gets underway... all throughout the spring, that once the General Assembly gets underway, we'll have a funding vehicle under House, former House Bill 1 to make East Middle happen.
Okay.
Can we get a quick update on what's happening out at Career and Tech?
Sure. Mr. Marks, Mr. Prokop?
No problem. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. We're awaiting our grading permit at the moment. It's going, we have all the approvals necessary, and it's the most important, as you know, county to get, you know, Mr. Cal, to get our site work going. And we have, all the approvals are done. It's going through their traditional Mylar signature routing, and the county has their own complications during COVID, obviously, with getting documents from agencies to agencies, different buildings to different buildings. And we're working with them right now to try to get those documents signed as fast as possible. As soon as they're signed and done, we get our meeting arranged in the, at the field with those Mylars, and they hand us our grading permit, and we begin digging. We're obviously going to be working on our schedule to get the groundbreaking ceremony scheduled with you all very soon. I'm anxious to do that, too. We've been spending most of our time, you know, discussing and going through hurdles with getting these documents and permits ready for us, so I apologize for the delay on that, but we'll work with you and staff on scheduling and get some baits going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Marks.
Okay, Ms. Savigny, I did have one question concerning the Robert Moten Elementary parking lot. Is the scheduled completion date still going to be accomplished, although I see that, you know, we've had to go back and try to redesign? It looks like the stormwater management pertaining to that, are we supposed to still be on schedule?
No, unfortunately, we're not. We're at a design disagreement right now between the county stormwater management reviewers and our engineers right now. We were really hoping that they would allow it, it was a grading-only submission, but they did not approve it. They're disagreeing with our, basically, it's an infiltration discrepancy or disagreement on how much, we're trying to, as you know, expand the parking in that area to get at least 30 parking spaces available, which they desperately need. So we proposed to use pervious concrete in that area so that we don't have to go through state highway provisions and build a structure down next to 32 and Washington Road. And so, and that would have taken a lot longer time. The problem right now is that the county's in disagreement on infiltration of the earth. We're going through, our engineers feel we're fine, but we're going through additional testing right now to see, to show them the data, and if it proves the way that our initial testing proved, then we're going to move forward again with the submission to show them that data and see if we can work through our problems. It's not going to happen in the same timeframe. We are working on different alternatives. If we can make them safely happen, we'll certainly propose that. It's a big setback, and we're not, obviously pleased, we're not out there doing the work, but we're going to do everything we can to make up for it.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Marks, just continuing on that one, so it doesn't look like the August 20th date would be able to be met, but is that something that it's not possible to really work on that once the school year begins? Is that, is that true?
Correct, for the majority. So as you remember, we're doing, we're replacing the existing parking lot in kind, and then we're adding the additional spaces. If there's any way that we can perform parts of the project before, in those last weeks of August, and get us to a place where we can safely operate smaller parts of the project outside, then we'll certainly pursue that. But that's, it's going to take a lot of strategic planning to make sure we can ensure that kind of safety. And we still have to give staff parking, right? They still need a place to park. So we'll have to consider all those dilemmas, and we'll work through it.
Okay. Board members, any other?
If I could comment on that, you were talking about the stormwater management with the county, but remember, stormwater management is a requirement of the state of Maryland. We do what they ask us to do. While it might seem that you're, we're butting heads with you, it's really not us, it's the state telling us what needs to be done. It's not the county in that instance.
Yeah, I don't want to go into a lot of the details, but a lot of it actually has to do with 1975 dirt that was moved when the school was built. So, we're, there's a disagreement that you can't put this type of surface on fill. We're actually, we're actually taking off the five, four to five feet of dirt to place this product there. So, that's why we're doing the additional testing. But we understand what you're saying, Commissioner, we're certainly going to work with them, and we totally agree, we abide by all the state guidelines and everything that they like to do. We're with them on it. So it's just, it's a mathematical and infiltration calculation right now that we just need to work out with them.
Right. Thank you.
No problem.
Board members, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Marks.
You got it.
Okay, and with that, we can move on to Item 5B, which is the proposed revisions to Board Policy ADD, the threats, violent acts, and weapons prohibited. And then, we can probably just roll into the conversation the associated regulations that are included under Items C and D.
Correct. Board members, it does probably make the most sense to discuss 5B, C, and D altogether here, as they're part of the same discussion. You might remember that following the passage of the Safe to Learn Act, not too long ago, we brought major revisions to Policy ADD and the two sets of administrative regulations that accompany the policy to comply with the new requirements in the law. We've been operating under the revised policy and regulations for over a full school year now, and we've noted some adjustments that we'd like to, you know, make that reflect how our best practice has evolved as we've implemented the new legal requirements. So, Mrs. McCabe, Mr. Streeker, Mr. Williams are all on the meeting here, available to explain the highlights of what's being changed and able to answer any questions that you might have. The policy change will be, as we typically do, will be submitted for public comment over the course of the next month and then returned to the next meeting for your action. And so we would also then update the regulations at that time. We just wanted to put them all together so you can see how that goes. So I don't know if Ms. McCabe or Mr. Streeker or Mr. Williams wanted to chime in here.
Yeah, so I would say that, as Dr. Lockard said, this, the changes that we're bringing to you tonight have come about based on the experiences that we've had implementing the policy and regs over the school year. And so, I'm going to have Mr. Streeker work the changes to the policy and regs for students, and then Mr. Williams will handle the regs for adults with the second regulation. Mr. Streeker?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Good evening, board members, Dr. Lockard, Commissioner Frazier. The policy changes that you have before you are primarily through the lens of definition changes. That's the primary policy changes that we have. And like Ms. McCabe said, the changes to policy and regs are due to the experiences that we've had in implementing the process this year, which we expect, and we review those practices, and we've learned a lot through this year. It's also based on experience we had with a consultant, Dewey Cornell, who's a recognized leader in comprehensive threat management. So we worked with his team as well this year. So the primary changes that we have are the definitions of a school triage team, which is a new definition, because we are moving from a central office-based team as far as threat management to school-based teams, because what we found throughout the year is that, generally speaking, these occurrences happen in schools, and we're operating and consulting with the schools, which is what we'll continue to do from central office, supporting schools, and the schools themselves will actually be managing the threats with central office oversight. So essentially, that's the biggest change. And the other piece that, as far as definitions that we needed to add and change are relating to the actual assessments, the definitions of threats themselves. And they're primarily in the differentiation between a threat risk level, which we continue with low, moderate, and high, and then the result of a behavioral threat assessment classification, which is, which is after the behavioral threat assessment is completed, where the threat risk level is at the time of the event, you know, where is the student? What is it that's happening? And then the behavioral threat assessment is following a comprehensive assessment that's done. We have more information that gives us the opportunity to provide necessary supports for that student and any other students that may be involved. So those are the changes. We also are changing, it's a little hard to see in the way we had to articulate it in the document, the definition of a weapon has been changed for subsection 4-102. We made that bold in the regulation because it's already, there's no way to capitalize something that's just a subsection in a number. So we made that bold in the, I'm sorry, in the policy. That's under definitions of weapons. It was an added subsection Mr. Williams shared with us. So without, I'll take any questions regarding the policy change.
Mr. Streeker, could you give a little bit of a detail about what is the definitional change for weapon?
I'll let Mr. Williams, I think it's more of a reference to the definition change, Mr. Williams, do you want to chime in on that part?
Sure. So, we felt that it was better for a policy to go ahead and cite the specific law that relates to what the definition of a weapon is. So, a lot of times, we had regulations, sometimes statutes refer back to specific citations in the law, and so every time that that law changes or is amended, you would have to go back and change the regulations. So, it really doesn't change a whole lot. One of the big things with 4-102 is what some of the provisions are for carrying a weapon on school property, too. So there was some things that we had sort of overlooked, or at least not clearly articulated when those exceptions apply. All of them are basically pertain to law enforcement officers, retired law enforcement officers, off-duty law enforcement officers, but we wanted to make sure that it aligned with the way that the law spoke.
Okay, and that is specifically addressed in the regulation documents that are also included, right? I mean, we talked about the retired law enforcement officers, okay.
Yeah, a good portion of what, of the work that took place was really about harmonizing the documents and making sure that everything aligned throughout all three of them with definitions, with references, and then obviously, some of the other changes that Mr. Streeker referred to.
Okay.
I thought we had said earlier, when we were maybe looking at another policy, that rather than referring us to a specific article, that we would go ahead and list out the information so we would have it at the policy level.
I was, I can tell you, I was unaware of that, but certainly, we could revisit that. It will increase the length of the document significantly, but if that's, if that's the direction, you know, that the board would want to go, we could, you know, Mr. Streeker and I could discuss that and revisit it.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether anyone else is remembering that or not, but again, we said, rather than going back and researching, that it would be good if we just had all the information right there at the policy level.
Dr. Dorsey, I do remember that.
Ms. Rochelle, may I speak?
Yes, please, Ms. Eisenberg.
I was the one who stated that several board meetings ago, because it's much easier for students, the public, parents, to just look at the regulation or policy and know what we're talking about, because most people don't have access to the education article or the criminal law article and wouldn't know where to start looking.
And that was, that, if I recall that conversation correctly, Ms. Eisenberg, that was, we were talking about the definitions as related to restraint and seclusion. When we look at the policy that you have in front of you, page 2, where we list the guidelines, I just, and we can certainly, the policy is the board's policy. When we list the guidelines, the Maryland Safe to Learn Act, Maryland Model Policy, you know, Co-Mar 26101, some level of concern that I would have is if, are we asking that we list and spell out each one of these guidelines in this document? I think it would be quite extensive.
I think it, wasn't it, I mean, if you were able to look online, that you'd be able to just click on it, and then it would take you to another navigation where you could see what the highlight was and what the definitions were?
Oh, you mean where we post the policy online?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if that's what.
And have embedded links within?
I think that's what I thought we meant.
Hyperlinks can be a bit challenging, Ms. Pataglia, because as the website changes, we don't own those websites. We actually removed, in a former policy, the wellness policy. We actually took out the hyperlinks to all of those for that very reason, because what happens as we review these, we go to click the link, it's no longer active by whatever place we're pointing to. So, that's just what I'm seeking clarification on, what the board's desire is as we look at the guidelines.
Well, Dr. Dorsey, tell me if I'm misinterpreting what you said, but I personally wouldn't have any problems with four guidelines. That's a list of the guidelines. I think that's appropriate. It's under seven definitions when weapons, instead of being defined, reference the guideline, and that's where I think if it doesn't add pages and pages to it, that's where the clarity might be good.
Yes, that's what I was referring to, rather than saying, okay, it's in this article, you know, let's list what those devices are if it's not going to make it too cumbersome for us. I would think it would be helpful to have it all right there.
And I tend to agree with that as well, because I noticed the bolding of the article, but didn't necessarily understand what that meant, right? So I mean, that's basically saying that that's the article that the definition changed in, so we can't really have a full understanding of what that change is if it's not readily available, right? So I think...
Let me be clear, it's what we added. We previously had not referenced that article. It's not that that article changed, it's that previously, we did not reference 4-102. We had previously referenced 4-101 and 4-501. Mr. Williams is well more versed in these than I am, but those were previously referenced. We had not included 4-102, and the only way for us to denote that, since usually we strike out and capitalize items on the regulations and policies, was to put it in bold so that it would stand out as a revision.
Okay. So then, would we necessarily know, you know, so if one of these articles, if the provisions within those articles change, we wouldn't necessarily have to change our policy?
Correct.
But would we want to know when those articles change and the fact that it might have an impact on the policy, right, because we've referenced them? I guess, is that the question, Ms. Eisenberg?
The issue here, and I'm looking at the AR, talks about any device defined in the criminal law article, that lists those articles, and then any other look-alike weapon or other object used to inflict serious bodily harm. It just seems that it's much easier for people reading this if we actually state what those items are. People need to know what they're violating.
Because I don't, I have no idea what that article is.
Right, what does that mean? Even if it had to be like an appendix or something, as, here's the, here's the article that we're referencing when we have it in the definition?
Let me ask Mr. Streeker, Mr. Williams, because I don't have it in front of me. We have a very nice, long definition under, for firearms. Are the devices listed in 4-101, 4-102, and 4-501? And Public Record Article 10110, any longer than that?
So...
Sorry.
So it, one article basically refers to dangerous weapons, one refers to carrying weapons on school property. Would I say that it's long? No. You know, probably would turn into another page for 4-101, and I'm sorry if I look like I'm losing my equilibrium here, I'm reading while I'm standing in front of this camera. But 4-102 is, that's quoted basically in paragraph 2 of the, that basically is the provisions or the exceptions to carrying weapons on school property. So, in our Student Services Manual, I know we outline a whole laundry list, and it all comes from this. We can certainly add that in. Again, it will add to the length of the article. I don't have any heartburn over doing it, other than it adds to the length of the document. But the flip side of the coin is, is that there are some things that are listed in there that folks still might not know what they mean. So, a lot of times, people will call us to make sure, at least administrators, to make sure that it fits a certain category, you know, dark knife, what's a dark knife, or, you know, those types of things. So, it's just a matter of, I don't disagree with Dr. Dorsey, it's just a matter of what the board wants here as far as in the policy. the board wants here, as far as in the policy.
I guess I had been used to just seeing, you know, what is being referred to as these weapons are concerned. So personally, I would like to see it. I mean, I think it would give us the information.
Just the one, the one caution, just another consideration, or just to be sure that we understand, is that the nimbleness of the policy update, sometimes that's the other challenge. Should there be wording that changes in the law? A few words here, there, if that happens, then we would need to bring the policy back for approval. We would operate under the law if it changed, whatever the law is. We would just need to bring it back to the board each time those definitions change for the sole purpose of updating the definition. So that is one of the trade-offs in that as well, just to share that reality.
But we'd have the information, and I think that's what I'd like to see.
Right. Then we would have it right in front of you, and then we would know whatever those changes are, it would be spelled out.
Right. And we could probably put something in there that says, you know, to the extent that these articles change, you know, we'll make reasonable efforts to update the policy in a timely manner. Not that, you know, we're not going to be following the law, but certainly, that wouldn't be the intent, if any of those definitions change. Am I hearing consensus from, from board members that that's something we'd be looking to include?
Yeah.
Okay. Look at, okay, I see Dr. Dorsey nodding, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so it's feedback for.
Yep.
Okay, board members, what I, what I will say is, I know that we haven't finished this topic. I think we should come back to it, but we do, it is 6:30, and we have one person waiting for citizen participation in the lobby. So, I would like to invoke our moving agenda item and allow that person to come in if everyone's okay with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the speaker is Joelle Scott.
Thank you all for your time. I want to start by thanking you all for your hard work and dedication to our students and their education. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication for the on-the-fly virtual learning that we all jumped into at the last minute. I know it wasn't easy on, not just the parents, teachers, we're all parents and teachers. So thank you all for pulling that together so quickly. I want to start out, I have several line items here that I wanted to discuss, and two pages, but I only have three minutes, so I'll go through it quickly. The board meeting minutes, page three, the resource concerns. Carroll County Public Schools needs to negotiate requirements. Who are those requirements with whom? Who are we negotiating requirements? Page three of the meeting minutes, 6:24.
We'll need to, we can address, if you leave your contact information, we will definitely follow up with.
Absolutely. I'm looking for the resource of, to whom that we are actually negotiating with. Is that negotiating based on our children's learning? Or what is that negotiating based on? Safety of teachers? What exactly is it? So that was one line item I wanted to clarify, so I could refer back to the meeting minutes. Also, 25% of students, one day per week. That's not enough. We need to get our kids back to school. Our kids need to be back to school full-time. The problem with the virtual learning, although it was on the fly, you guys did an incredible job, right? The strain that it has on the families, on the students. It's very difficult. My home personally, both my husband and I work, we have two children. So after working a 10 to 12-hour day at the office, traveling, I travel often, with two kids at home, and then teaching at night, teaching during the day, maybe doing conference calls, it's very hard on the kids and the parents emotionally. Mentally, they're not learning. They're completing assignments, checking the box, turning it in, taking a picture of it, sending it to the students, I mean, to the teachers. That's not learning. That's not an education. That's simply checking a box. Our students need, and our parents require our students to be educated. We cannot go into the fall with full-fledged virtual learning with two, three days a week. We need to figure out how to do this five days a week safely for our students, as well as our teachers. We've had three months to work on the worst-case scenario in the fall so far. We have what? Couple more months left to finalize some worst-case scenario plans.
Excuse me. Finish your thought, but you may leave all your information with us.
Okay.
Okay.
So, in addition, I also had, let's see, yes, single parents, working parents, and the actual virtual learning for the children. If we have to do virtual learning, if that's what the consensus becomes, it has to be live. The students and teachers, it has to be live. It has to be structured like a full school day. Start, my high schooler's going to start at the same time, the same class that he would start five days a week, on that same day. My elementary school student, same class, same time, every day. Me personally, I have to hire a tutor, a teacher, on those virtual learning days, to teach my children, to make sure that they're doing their schoolwork. My husband and I can't do it, because we're working to provide for our family. So the strain on families, the emotional toll, the mental health of our children, is vital for you all to take to the governor, to the state, and make some very drastic decisions, and make them quickly, because we have time to hire contractors to prepare our schools and to do this right, and to do it five days a week, and to stagger classroom dismissals, lunches, everything that we have to do. We can do it. We can do the impossible, we just did, that we've never done before. So I'm looking to you guys, as our leaders, for our children's education, to make this happen and do what's right for the students. And that's it. Do what's right for our students.
Thank you.
And bring us back full-time. Thank you all for your time. Have a great summer.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'll leave my information up front.
Thank you.
And there are no other speakers waiting, okay. All right. If one should happen to come, I think that we're probably good. If one should happen to come, we can, we can break and go to that again as well, but, okay. So, back to the discussion about policy ADD. So we had just come to consensus about including the definitions within the body of the document so that we don't have to refer to outside resources. Were there other discussions or items that we wanted to bring up on the policy?
I just think it's a good idea with clarity. I think that nails it.
Okay. Great. Okay. Dr. Locker, did we, did we just want to roll into the discussion of the regulations?
Sure, yes. And we've adjusted those accordingly. Carl, or Cindy, if you want to give the highlight of that change?
Sure. So I'll highlight Regulation 1, and then Mr. Williams will share Regulation 2. So Regulation, Regulation 1, which pertains to students, the scope that's changed is really laying out the clarifying role, which is really Dwayne's world predominantly, of defining the law enforcement, who can and can't carry weapons on property. So, that's the primary change in the scope. I'll pause for questions about that, because Dwayne's more versed in that area, if you have any questions about what we've laid out there.
So Mr. Strecker, I noticed that the same definitions about the off-duty law enforcement officers and such, that they're exactly the same in the two regulations. Is that because we're trying to outline, okay, who can carry a weapon regardless of whether it's a student or an adult? Is that? It felt like something that was more pertaining to adults than it was to students, but that same definition was in both places.
I understand. At first, I didn't quite understand, so thank you for that clarification. This is, this is the regulation regarding to, with the regulations themselves, we want to lay out the whole scope, so who's allowed to have a weapon on school property relates to both the regulation that is student-centered, as well as the regulation that is adult-centered. It's not to say the school, the rules for children versus the rules for adults. It's, it's laying out, this is the primary area, we look at the student population, the other one's the adult population, but all of them involve, and we should articulate in the regulation, who is permitted to carry a weapon and who is not.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Why do we have retired law enforcement officers who are permitted to carry weapons on school grounds? I would think the less weapons, the better, so why are they, why are they allowed in this regulation?
You want me to answer that, Carl?
Yes.
I would say, one, they're authorized, if they, if they are a LEOSA hard carrier, qualify every year, the federal law permits them to do so, and I would proffer the, the argument that if an active assailant comes onto school property, I wouldn't want someone who is there and capable to respond not to be able to respond.
Well, I can see that argument. I would want at least weapons as possible on school, on school properties. If they're qualified to keep the weapon or have the weapon, that's fine, keep it in your car before you walk, go into the school, lock it up. I, I mean, I'm only one person, I'm not even an official board member, so, but I'm just thinking, you have, I mean, you have an SRO officer in many cases, if any current law enforcement officer's there, they have their weapons, I'm looking at limiting the number of weapons, and the instance you brought up, why it's possible, it's highly unlikely.
Okay, and not to get into a debate, but at Sandy Hook Elementary, there was one shot fired for every two seconds. Every two seconds, one shot fired. It would probably take me, or a retired law enforcement officer, over a minute to get to their car, to get back to the school, and might very well be the first person to be able to assist in a situation like that. And again, the law permits it, so it's, it's a board decision, ultimately. The board can be more restrictive than what the law allows, but it's ultimately a board.
And Mr. Williams, I also want to just, just share, this isn't just during school hours. This could be as a concert, or an after-school event, or a weekend event. It could, it could even include rec council, like, you know, people want school property. So, so I do think it's a larger context than just the typical day-to-day operations of school, as we consider that, that lens. So, Mr. Frazier, I understand your concern and your point certainly has, has its merit. When you think about the, although unlikely during a regular school day, I think the likelihood increases to those evening events that we have, and that response would be very much appreciated. And depending upon the level of the school, let's remember, at our elementary and middle schools, for the most part, we don't have specialized security when we have our concerts and other activities where we have things open to the public. So this would permit law, you know, people who have the right to carry, in that, the ability to do so and be able to respond.
Mr. Williams, I was actually going to comment and say, a lot of times, most of the security we have for after-school activities, like our football games and such, are a lot of our retired law enforcement officers. So I definitely don't have a problem with that. I think that is something that, you know, we definitely need to make sure we have after school hours. I mean.
That's entirely different. You're paying those people to be there for security. That's an entirely different situation than what we're talking about right now. I just brought it up.
No?
You all can, can decide how you'd like. My position is, a few guns as possible on campus, whether it's for a concert or a wrestling match, a lot of people there for that, and, or anything like that, it's fine. We, I just, just something I thought I'd bring up.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Frazier. That, again, as Mr. Williams said, that is currently the law. We're following the law here, and that is a board decision in terms of what's incorporated into the policy.
So that's a, yeah, it's a legitimate.
This is not a change to our current policy. That is not changing what we're currently doing. We are currently operating that way. It's just the verbiage is different. So, we're not changing, if you look at what's stricken, retired law enforcement officer in good standing, the, we're not changing our practice, board members. I think that's important to note as well.
Right, I understand it. I understand it. I'm just bringing it up, I was in here when you made it the first time.
I understand.
But I'm here now.
Right. It's a legitimate question and a legitimate point to discuss. I mean, if, because you said, like you said, this is the law, we can be more restrictive than the law as a board if we want to be. Can't be less restrictive than the law. But, I mean, it's certainly something that we probably would be interested in hearing public feedback, if others are concerned about it, but I'm not hearing some concern from other board members.
I mean, honestly, I don't really see them going into a school and they just take their gun out and start waving it around. That's not what they do. I mean, it's concealed, it's, you know, they don't show it to everybody. So I don't understand why that's kind of being brought up as a concern. I mean, you don't know, unless you see it. And it's, it's obviously a trained person who knows how to use that. It's not just everyday person coming off the street, it is a trained individual.
From a student perspective, I think, of course, the students would be more comfortable with the less firearm, less weapons there are in school, though I'm open to whatever else the board thinks on their, on their.
I think, I think it's a good point, I'm glad it's being discussed, and I think I look at it, if we were changing to this, I'd be more skeptical, but we're not changing to it, and it is the law. And I would think if there's any, if you, if you guys have any doubt about it, which I'm not sure you do, maybe run it by the sheriff and just see which way he feels with it, and I think if he says, I'm okay with it, then I, who am I to say no?
That's a good idea. Does it, does it make sense to, to specifically request a feedback of Sheriff Dewey's and interaction with SROs and things like that within the school?
I'm sure you guys talk all the time.
Myself and, are you talking about me, Mr. Kyler?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for him on this, but he's never voiced an opinion in opposition of the LEOSA provisions within the law. And I can tell you from, I'm a retired law enforcement officer, it's always better to have someone there who can assist you when somebody's shooting at you, than not to have someone there who can assist you. So, I can tell you, in my five years here, we've never had an issue with this come up with a parent, guardian, who is a retired law enforcement officer, where they've either A, brandished a weapon, or did not follow the rules. And so, it's never created an issue.
And I think that's a good point. It hasn't been a problem.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Dwayne, that's a point well taken.
And even though we, we were here last year with this policy and regulation being new through the lens of the Safety Learn Act, this provision has been longstanding well before that. So it wasn't necessarily new last year, as it's not new this year. The Safety Learn Act has caused us to change different things, but when Mr. Williams refers to his five years in the county prior to that, that this is, this has been a longstanding practice, as we think about. So Mr. Kyler, to your, to your point of, you know, are we bringing something new? We're not, we're just articulating it in a way that we believe is more clear.
Right. Actually, to Dr. Dorsey's argument, this is 4-102.
Well done, Dr. Dorsey.
We did think it was good to spell this one out, so.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I was just thinking, I mean, I can remember, you know, being a principal, I mean, like if you were having evening activities, you knew. mean, like, if you were having evening activities, you knew who your police folks were, who were coming onto your campus, and, um, again, I guess more than anything, you, you felt a little more secure rather than just the opposite of that, so, um, and again, like you said, these are trained people, and, again, I just think they add sort of an additional layer of security there that we wouldn't ordinarily have, especially at evening, um, functions.
Okay, so, um, board members, did we have any other questions about the, I guess, right now, we're still looking at the, oh, no, we, we cut you guys off, you were, you were still talking about the differences.
I cut myself off and stopped at that point, just for clarification, so I, um, are we ready to move beyond the scope of, uh, Reg One, or I guess we're good to do that, is that correct? Okay, so, I appreciate the feedback on that and, and good, healthy discussion on that. So, regulation, as we continue, um, uh, in the Responsibility section, there's another update in responsibilities regarding the use of school triage teams, which I referred to, uh, when, when I discussed the change in policy, um, the school, the school level and adding involvement of school-level directors in that, so those are the highlights in the responsibilities, because school-based triage teams will be, will be responsible for, um, the first level of responses, is the way I would describe that. In section, um, also in Section Three, I got, I'm on page three now, um, we, we talk about the process of a school triage team, uh, and, and the way they conduct an assessment. Um, they do, it's a very quick process, again, this is something that we've learned, and, and based on the feedback we got from our consultant, um, that concept of the, the triage team really does a quick assessment and decides whether or not a more in-depth analysis, a behavioral threat assessment needs to be done, um, or not, and that's, that's the functionality of the school-based triage team. Um, and then Section, or Roman numeral four on page three, we add the definition of a school-based threat assessment team, because that would be a comprehensive team that will conduct a behavioral threat assessment, should one be needed, um, and then the central office threat management team is the, describes our role as a central office oversight and providing support, uh, for our school-based teams, which, in many of the instances that we dealt with this year, is what we realized, one of the reasons we're changing is that's kind of what ended up being more practical and what happened. We would be consulting with our school-based teams, providing direction to them and support. So that, that seemed to be a necessary change as moving forward. The next section, Section Four, rather than naming procedure, uh, we've, we've named it discipline, and it outlines the disciplinary process regarding, uh, incidences that involve threats, violent acts, firearms, and weapons. Uh, not a lot of verbiage change in the actual, uh, process there, um, until you get to page five, where, rather than talking about the school-based interventions, we've actually, um, decoupled those, and we talk about discipline, and we have a whole nother section dedicated to the, um, management of the threat, so that's why you see that significant change in Roman numeral four on page five.
So, under discipline, um, there hasn't been any changes, but what really determines the age of responsibility? Is, is it a policy that was from the state?
Yes, seven years old is, and that, that's why we define that, the age, it's, it's not an arbitrary, it, it's seven years old is, is where that changes.
All right, thank you.
And then, on Roman numeral five, page six, as we get in, a lot of the pieces that are stricken are because we're moving that to a separate section with the triage, so, uh, in the previous, um, uh, regulation, the way we were operating, we kind of had things blended, that we would process the discipline side as well as, uh, doing, uh, threat assessment, we've, we've kind of coupled those out. And we renamed, instead of what was called a violence assessment, um, page seven, we've referred that now as a behavioral threat assessment, um, that is the updated terminology that we'll be using. Um, and then the significant, significant changes on page nine, I'm skipping ahead because the other pieces were all the same, um, we did, we did recognize that we needed to define more clearly, again, as we're learning and trying to make things more clear than, you know, what exactly is a non-affiliated person, there's a definition, but we wanted to say in this regulation, we're covering persons other than students, employees, or former, former employees, because the other regulation is directed towards, um, employees or former employees, so we wanted to differentiate that on Section Eight, and, um, I'm not, I'm sorry, Roman numeral, Roman numeral seven, um, and then we get into threat management, Section Five is where we outline, it's a new section, it's where we outline the process of how we respond to a threat. Uh, we always want to contain the threat first, the triage team, and it describes what a triage team does in, in numbers one through five, um, and then, that kind of outlines the process that's, that's done, and then the last pages are the associated definitions, which based on earlier conversation, will be expanding the definition of weapon to include, uh, the spelling out of four, one oh one, one oh two, and so forth, so, um, I, I think that kind of goes over the review of the changes, and just welcome any questions you may have about, about this.
Mr. Streaker, the one question I have is, um, regarding, like, things like online bullying, comments made online, is there going to be a way that if a parent sees something that they can contact someone at the school immediately?
They-
Send screenshots, or, you know, at least have some type of resource or a phone number that they can reach out to?
Ms. Pataglia, you're, I, I'm having trouble with audio a little bit, but I, I think when I heard the question, I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page, uh, do parents have a way or, or, you know, to report, uh, instances of bullying or anything that's online, and then have the ability to, to share screenshots, is that correct?
Yeah, there, is there going to be a way to attach that to the school triage team for each individual school?
Any information that's sent, and, and most often, um, what happens is, uh, parents, you know, the email addresses of, of our administrators are on websites, and people know they, so often they'll email the school principals, uh, there are times that those emails or concerns may go to Dr. Lockard specifically, um, and then we're looped in, they may go, um, those are usually where they go, and there's also, um, a state tip line that we get, uh, tips going into, so, the ability of the public to report instances and share details, uh, I believe is, is certainly, um, out there that, that people can do it. We get plenty of them, so I think that people are aware of how to report them, and they do of, often include screenshots and different things, because that certainly provides context to whatever the concern is.
I just want to make sure we do have, there, you know, the resources out there and parents are aware of the resource, because there are times I'm contacting, like, I don't know who to contact, so I, I think we need to somehow add it to whatever s- school webpage that, there, this is the link to report anything, I, I think that's something important, we need to make sure that parents know of.
Is the tip line still on our scroll? I, I know it, for quite some time, it was on the front page of our-
So, the, the tip line is still linked to our, our website, um, and, uh, Ms. Pataglia, you could also, I mean, I don't sleep, so, just send them the page, um, and, uh, then I'll, I'll call the sheriff's office, uh, or the appropriate school administrator, but, uh, I'm just kind of joking with you, but we, we probably could do a, a better job of promoting the tip line this year, as we move into the school year, we do have some posters up at the different schools, um, we do have it linked to the website, uh, and we do have it linked to, uh, our school dude, school dude's safety app, which I wish we did get more downloads on that, um, so if they have a tip or there's a threat, um, they can just click on a link and it takes them right to, uh, the tip line, and they have the ability to, uh, type in all the information, it's handled confidential, uh, confidentially, uh, and also upload photos, uh, or videos, uh, and then that gets sent to me day or night, 24 hours a day, uh, as well as our SRO supervisors, uh, and our school directors, so, um, so it, it, there's, there's a, a lot of redundancy built into it, uh, but, uh, that's typically the best vehicle to get that information input.
And there's also, the bullying reporting form is online as well within CCPS, so, if it's a, a matter of bullying, that's available online, um, you know, and, and again, I, I'm certainly welcome for someone to reach out to me, but typically, who people think of is, they think of their school principal, um, and I would encourage the public that, that if it's a, if it's a life-threatening imminent emergency, please call 911, don't email your principal, um, they may not be awake and get it that second, if it's that imminent, it really is, uh, something that we struggle with, uh, if something is of that magnitude. If it's something that we need to be aware of so we can respond to, the tip line is a great resource, the emails are great resources, um, but we, if it needs immediate action, it, it certainly needs to be heightened to that level.
And who would typically be the members of a school-based threat assessment team? Would it be the, the principal and then?
Yes, the, the threat assessment, uh, it, it includes a mental health provider, so if we do a behavioral threat assessment, um, school psychologist will be, uh, leading that group, with the principal, pupil personnel worker, um, special education teacher as necessary, um, so the, the makeup of the, the behavioral threat assessment team, um, includes that as, as well, um, and, and we have procedures as far as the way they'll conduct that, we have a standardized, um, uh, protocol that will be used, as well as the interviews and things like that from the actual, um, threat that, that started the act, so the triage team information will be reviewed, the triage team, so the, the instant response is school administrator, mental health provider, which may be a school counselor, school psychologist, somebody who's in the building that moment, as well as law enforcement, uh, could be the SRO, could be consult with Dwayne, um, but the triage on the immediate side is, is, um, are, are defined by those three folks.
And again, there are specific forms that need to be completed, and, again, it sort of spells out what needs to be done, and it needs to be done very timely. You could be in the middle of a thousand other things going on in your school, but if some of this comes your way, all of that goes to the side and you need to deal with these imminent situations right away.
And Dr. Dorsey, that point, the higher, like, we, the, um, triage team is activated within one day, so the triage has to happen right away, and then the comprehensive behavioral threat assessment, um, and we, where it should be completed within five days, this is the bottom of page nine where that's outlined, um, but certainly completed before the student returns to school, so, if the student is out of school longer than five days and we're needing to get other things in order, uh, we'll have that completed before they return to school, um, but certainly within five days, so we, we wanted to define that in two ways, um, to make sure that we were able to really, um, the, the threat assessment primarily is to make sure that we put appropriate supports in place, um, then, that, making sure what does that student need, what mental health resources, uh, can we provide, what safety plans need to be put in place for the student and/or any potential targets or victims, so it is, it is, well, um, very involved, I'll say.
And Mr. Streaker, I realize that this all makes sense, that basically revising the plan after you've had some live experience, um, with this over the, the past year or so, and these, these are the kind of things that, you know, it's a, it's a moving document, I guess, in terms of, okay, how do we, how do we address and change, address and change based on things that we're seeing in real life, and I think a lot of this makes sense. Um, the one thing that I want to make sure, though, is since we're moving to more of a school-based triage team, that we're still capturing all of the events and tracking and monitoring that to make sure that we are putting the right resources in place, that we, we understand the impact that it's having, um, in various schools around the system, right, so, and that's much easier to do when it's all at the, at a central office-based level, um, but I realize that it makes more sense to have a lot of this at the, at the school-based level, but just want to make sure that we're consistent in the way that we're tracking and, and looking at it, and so that we can adjust accordingly.
And all, just, just to, uh, share, um, procedurally what we'll be doing, any moderate risk threat or higher, uh, in its initial classification, will be captured in our threat management system, so we, we are, uh, developing, almost ready to finalize, uh, threat management system, similar to the discipline system that we use in the schools, so, uh, Ms. Savigny, I, I'm confident that that, that will help us, um, be able to monitor and put the appropriate supports in place, and, and allow us to be sure that we're supporting our students and keeping things safe. And Ms. Savigny, I do want, in the definition section of a threat assessment team, uh, we do define that that's an administrator, school psychologist, representative from law enforcement, and other staff as appropriate, so, page 11, we specifically define those members, so, I shared that, but it's also, it is specifically outlined, the triage team and the threat assessment team, that will be conducting behavioral threat assessment.
Right, thank you for that, I knew I had seen it, I just couldn't put my eyes on it at the moment, so thank you.
Well, I remembered it was there, and I knew it was in it, but I didn't remember exactly where, so I had to find that too, so.
Board members, any other questions on that?
No, thanks, this is, uh, it's, it's good, it's detailed and has to be, it's good.
Thank you. Mr. Williams can share, uh, Reg Two, which is the, the big kid version, the adult version of, uh, lots of parallels, and I think, as Mr. Williams shares that, you'll see that we structured this in very parallel fashion, um, as we put it together.
So, if there's no more questions, I'll just kind of gloss over Reg Two, or do we want to, President Savigny, do you want me to hold off for a second?
Um, I, I think we can, do you just want to kind of quickly roll through the, the changes?
Yeah, I, I think I can do it real quick, because it, again, it parallels, so, um, really, the only changes are really the, the folks that are being dealt with in, in the procedures, so, we don't have disciplinary authority, uh, over, uh, non-employees, I mean, or over former employees, we do over employees, but it's different, um, so, basically, the definitions stay the same, a lot of the information stays the same, we made some adjustments in, in responsibilities, you'll see that protective and peace orders, uh, were replaced restraining, um, there's, that's just a, a legal term, it's just the proper term for what is currently, uh, the, the norm in Maryland, there's not restraining orders, there's peace orders and protective orders, um, and then, uh, basically, the responsibility just shifts a lot of times, uh, when we get deeper into the document, to the, uh, to a central office team, but most of, most of it is handled in the, in a lot of the same ways, absent school discipline, um, and so there's not a lot of additional things in this, uh, matter of fact, there's hardly any additional things in this compared to, uh, Regulation One, so I, I would probably be wasting your time going into great detail. Simple thing is, you know, and it's just little things, we don't flag licenses, that's what MDA does, uh, for, like, you know, motor vehicle violations, what we do is we put an alert in our system, so when the license is scanned, so, just changing little, uh, little pieces of the, the, the regulation that accurately, accurately reflect what is occurring, uh, as opposed to what maybe sounds, uh, sounds appropriate.
So, board members, any questions or comments about the differences on the, the adult version of, of the regs versus the student version?
No question, but again, it's good to see that, again, um, folks have access to the employee assistance program if needed.
Well, I appreciate you guys walking us through this, um, I think it all, all hangs together very well, makes a lot of sense, um, and basically revising as we, as we gain more experience on this front, so, um, we'll be putting this out for public comment.
Correct, and bringing it back for approval, uh, at the August meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl and Dwayne, for all your work.
Absolutely, and a lot of members of the team, so we certainly want to recognize them as well, it's a collective effort.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, so, with that, we can move on to Section Six for the action items. Okay, so, um, up first, we've got the, uh, approval of appointments, so I need a motion to approve, the, uh, motion for the approval of appointments.
So, looped.
Uh, moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Okay, Dr. Lockard.
All right, board members, this evening I have, uh, three- All right, board members, this evening I have three recommendations for your approval in terms of appointments. First, I'm recommending Sarah Andrews, she's currently a reading specialist at Westminster Elementary. I'm recommending her to acting assistant principal at Westminster Elementary to fill a vacancy there. Second, you remember in our approved budget for FY '21, we added a school psychologist, I'm happy to report, that we are recommending Catherine Fong to that school psychologist position. And finally, another vacancy that we're going to fill, we have a vacancy in the supervisor of social studies position, and we're recommending Ryan Melhorn to supervisor of social studies. And those are the three recommended appointments I bring to you this evening for your approval.
Board members, any questions or comments about those?
Not a question, but I think it's interesting, two of the three came from other counties, but at least one of the two had ties to Carroll County before that. So it's, it's kind of interesting how they move around and apply. And when we hear, and I've heard from other counties, they don't like us robbing their people. But good job.
We're happy to do so. Especially with well-qualified folks like these, so.
So I do know that this isn't really a question about those particular appointments, but just in terms of additional onboarding procedures that we've been putting in place, right, since we do have folks coming in from, from out of the county, it's good that we were able to do this still in a timely fashion.
Yes, and when we, I was prepared to make some comments regarding that as we, as we, you know, move forward in the next, I don't want to skip to the next agenda without your, your approval there, but yes, there's a lot still happening behind the scenes even during this time. And I was going to talk about it because in the next item, when we get to the personnel action items, you're going to see we're bringing on lots of new teachers and staff as well, and how a lot of that onboarding has been happening all summer long. I'm prepared to talk about that next.
Okay. Well, so that we don't skip too much, why don't we, I didn't hear any additional questions about the approval of the appointments. So with that, I will call for the vote, all those in favor, if I can get a verbal aye, please.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So then I will call for a motion for the approval of the personnel action items.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bataglia. Okay, Dr. Lockard, now we can move into that.
Will do. And board members, this is typically the time of the year when I'm bringing you larger numbers in terms of the personnel action items with retirements and resignations at the end of a year, a school year. So this evening, I'm bringing 56 new hires, two promotions, two leaves of absence, and 12 increases in positions outlined in the agenda packet. And as you can see, and we just talked about, despite the changes brought by the COVID-19 pandemic, our, our business process continues even as we made adjustments in the practice. As you recall, we've informed you in several of our pandemic update meetings, which have now transitioned to reopening planning meetings that we kind of started to talk about tonight, taking proactive steps to ensure we're as ready as possible for next school year. And human resources is no exception to that rule. The restrictions brought about by the pandemic, notably restricted building access, particularly early on, limited meetings, and reduced high-touch paper and items, and it's caused us to make some adjustments on the fly, but we've made them. In human resources, in order to continue filling vacancies and complete hiring for the school year, we've made changes in practice and also have outsourced aspects of the onboarding process to ensure that we're ready. We've executed contracts to outsource both employee fingerprinting and processing of employee documentation digitally. We didn't want to get behind there, so we took some proactive steps, and I appreciate Chantris and the HR staff in making that happen. At least initially, neither of these two contracts exceeded $25,000 and therefore didn't need to come for your approval and didn't need to invoke emergency procurement. Both those contracts will appear on our monthly professional services contract report, which as you know is available on our public website for you or anyone else in the public to review. If these changes are successful in terms of the outsourcing that we did there, and we need or want or see a need to extend them beyond initial period, we would certainly bring those extensions to you for your approval. But I just want to give you a little bit of background about some of the steps we took to make sure that that business continued and we were able to work around some of the things that were facing us. So I bring those personnel action items and a little background story to you for your approval.
So board members, any questions about the appointments?
Yes, all of our six special ed positions filled, the additional ones that we had in the budget.
I'm going to, I'm going to see if Nick is, is on, if we've, if we've secured all of those at this point.
Yes, all the six additional positions have been filled. We still have a few vacancies out there that we're looking to fill, but all the six new elementary positions are filled as of today.
That's great to hear, Nick.
That is great to hear.
Thank you.
And do we have an idea of how many vacancies do we still have system-wise?
So that'll look at Chantris.
Yes, so currently, we have about five vacancies, it's no more than normal. We are anticipating that the July 15th is the tenure teacher notification date for when teachers have the ability to, or the requirement to notify us that they're moving to another system or out of our system. So until that date comes, we really don't know what our staffing will concretely look like for this coming fall.
Okay, thanks. And Chantris, that includes retirements as well, is that correct?
That includes retirements as well, general retirements as well.
Okay. So, because I think on an annual basis, we typically see between 80 and 100, is that?
That is true, generally, so this year, we, we're trending the same. I, you know, in regards to COVID, many people are inquiring, do we see a spike? Right now, we're trending the same. We do not know what that will be once our finalized plan will come out and unveil itself, but right now, we have, we have no spike in retirements or resignations.
Okay, okay. So we had the 56, or it looks like possibly 61 positions, you're saying there's five open, right?
Still open.
Still open at the moment, but we filled 56 out of 61 potentially, okay.
And so, and generally, I will tell you, July 15th is generally a very busy day, where we receive at the very last minute.
Okay, and that will actually very closely coincide with the unveiling of the first version of the plan, correct, at our meeting on the 15th?
July 15th.
Okay. So that doesn't impact the, the approval of this action item, but we definitely need to keep our eyes on the fact that there could be some other factors at play in terms of how much staff that we may need to hire at the last minute in this, in this coming year?
Yep.
Okay, but as of right now, we're not seeing a spike more than what, we're not seeing a spike. It's about at the pace that we would expect?
Correct. And I'd like to congratulate the instructional assistants or career professionals who are moving into teaching positions, that's always good to see.
That is.
That's a tuition reimbursement plan at work.
That's great.
That is very good to see. And there's also a pretty wide range of experience levels when, when you look at this as well. Board members, any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment, I see some names on the list that did not get taught by Mrs. Herbert, but she might have taught their parents.
Thank you Kenny, and one of the speakers tonight, I taught, I just want to let you know that. Or I might be related to them or something. There's a lot out there.
All right, then, with that, I will call for the vote, all those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. And so now we'll move on to 6C. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of the award of bids.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, President Savigny, there are eight items on the approval award of bids. What I'd like to do is have the board consider, if we could put items three, four, and eight sort of together for discussion, because they're very much related to our efforts around reopening and dealing with the COVID pandemic, there are other items there, and certainly we can take your questions as you might have them, but Ms. Savigny, if it pleases the board, I'd like to approach it that way, start with items three, four, and eight, give you a little bit of background and some explanation, have a little bit of conversation around that.
Okay. Board members, I think that makes sense, everybody okay with that approach? Okay, great.
Good. So item three is to do with custodial cleaning and restroom products, and this is a piggyback award with Baltimore County Public Schools that relates specifically, as I said, to our reopening and recovery planning. As I noted during the personnel transaction report, we've shared often that we're in full planning mode, and in some cases, we can't wait to order the supplies and equipment we need to implement our reopening plan. Mr. O'Neill shared at the last update meeting in June, somewhat joking that every time he and I speak, I make it really clear that we gotta, we gotta get on these things and we gotta make sure we have the supplies we need. We don't want that to be a reason that we couldn't open. So in that sense, we're ordering as we identify needs, trying to stay in line as best we can with the available market, and ordering when necessary in advance of the final plan. So we're undertaking a number of methods to accomplish this. In the case of HR, we signed a couple of smaller contracts, again, I just discussed those below your approval threshold to get started. In some cases, such as this item, we're identifying existing contracts on which we can piggyback and bring to immediately. In other cases, as we'll get down to item number eight in a little bit, when no other options available, we'll invoke emergency procurement and make the necessary purchases, and then add them to the next award of bids on, you know, to update you on their status. And again, I'm doing that out of urgency, I've given you that sort of heads up before, but I do not want to wait and have that bite us later on. So this award is for $225,000 for hand sanitizer and hand sanitizer pumps. That's a lot of hand sanitizer. But let me give you a little background, the pandemic will require us to provide more than ever before, both in terms of locations around buildings and the available amount that we'll anticipate to use. So this is, this is an award that we believe will allow us to get the school year started and get going. And I don't believe it's what we're going to need for the entire school year, so it just gives you some perspective on costs associated with all this, but also utilization rates. So we'll make some initial determinations once we get open relative to usage rates and burn rates of how fast we're going through some of these things, to see when we need to order more and at what volume. Obviously, as I said, there's a real cost to the pandemic and the reopening, and this is one example. And at some point, as we gain experience with our new mode of operation, we'll work to update you on the impacts of other operating costs as well. But the first thing I wanted to bring you was that one. Can I, we can talk about that if you'd like? Sure.
I know Mr. Singer had said, and I know it's so many variables now and you don't know what you're going to be when you open, but one of the things Mr. Singer said was, kids get off the bus, it'd be great if they can wash their hands. I'm not sure we physically have enough sinks for them to do that. Does this supplement that? Is that one of the purposes of this, or doesn't it?
So, go ahead, John, I was going to say, you're correct, we don't have enough sinks. So we, we do need to have this as an alternate availability for our students, for our staff members. John, did you want to add anything to that?
No, you've, and the other thing is typically in history, we not have had hand sanitizer in classrooms, and in this case, we, the cost you're seeing reflects basically every, every occupied space, more or less, so every, every classroom, every office area. It will take this volume just, just to get open, as Dr. Lockard said.
And so we should expect this to come back. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Dorsey.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just looking at the spaces where we're looking at placing these wall-mounted hand sanitizers. I was wondering whether we were going to have any at the entry of our buildings.
I believe we will have some in, in some of the common areas, and typically, those are the sort of places where we might already have hand sanitizer. But Mr. Prokop, if he's listening in, shared the, the putting together of this work group item, so Ray, if you're more specific, go ahead.
Yeah, well, first, I apologize for the informal attire, I came into the office and wasn't able to get back to get changed at home, so this is me in all my glory. We have, we deliberately ordered a few hundred more of the pumps to account for the spaces where we say, oh, yeah, we ought to put them here or put them there. So entrance ways would be, would be one of those places, I would assume, we'd probably go ahead and do that, you know, and I'm certain there's going to be areas we've forgotten. So we counted up all the teaching stations, and then offices, and then we, you know, we've gone from there. And I said, we, like I said, we added extra just to account for breakage and also for those, those spaces that maybe we missed.
And this, board members, if I might, this is not the update meeting, and I know that, but it'll be impossible to cover everything in any one setting. So while I have, Ray, just to answer the question that might, might arise, this does not account for school buses having hand sanitizer on school buses, and there's some reasons for that, Ray.
That's correct. Yeah, the State Highway Administration won't allow us, allow flammable liquids to be placed on buses. And then there is the possibility of non-flammable materials, but they turn into apparently some slippery mess, they cause concerns in other areas. So at the moment, we're not providing that for buses, or we're not, or at least, yeah, we're not ordering it, we're not providing it, in consultation with Mr. Hardesty.
So to your point, Dr. Dorsey, we want them lathering up as soon as they come in off the buses, whether it's in the entrance way or as they enter their, you know, their first classroom for the day, that sort of thing.
And so this is primarily for the wall mounts and the hand sanitizer that goes along with it, but that's just to get, but is that all the wall mounts that we need to get the school year started?
Yeah, we believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the sanitizer itself.
But the sanitizer itself, we should expect to see significant bills for that coming up again under the award of bids in, during the school year?
Later months, yes.
Right. Do we have any kind of estimate as to how much we think, so it's $225,000 to get us started for the school year, do we have any idea what that might be projected to be for the whole school year?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's going to be another 225 at a time, because this includes the, the actual pumps themselves in a lot of cases. I think that depends on our burn rates, I think it depends on pricing, and I think it depends on what's happening with COVID.
Yeah.
Right.
We have no history to go off of with this, so we'll be monitoring it closely in those first few weeks and months. We feel that what we have should, should suffice to get us through with the first few months. We've tried to do some rough back-of-the-napkin calculations, back-of-the-envelope calculations, but it's a bit of a guess.
Dr. Dorsey, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I was saying, I assume these are the touchless hand sanitizers where you just put your hand underneath rather than touching something?
No, it's a pump.
It's an, so they would have to actually touch the pump?
Right, they'd have to, it's a push, wall-type, you would push it, yes. The, the automatic versions are, they're difficult to maintain, they're battery-operated, you could just imagine now multiplying batteries through, through all this to, to have them operate. So the idea being, you push it, that's, everyone touches that part, but then you're sanitizing. So the idea is that it should be, it should serve the purpose, but no, it's not touchless.
Board members, any other questions about the, the hand sanitizer? Okay, so I want to move on to number four?
I'd like to move on to number four then, thank you. This is a, award of bid to Sourcewell, indefinite quantity construction contract. This is another award that's being brought specific in response to the pandemic and our reopening planning process. The award to Centennial Contractors Enterprises is for job order contracting. This is something we've looked at for some time, actually, pre-pandemic and considered This is something we've looked at for some time, actually, pre-pandemic, and considered employing in some limited circumstances, especially as other Maryland school systems around us have gained more experience with job ordering contracting. But we made the decision to bring this now directly to help us be ready as we gear up through reopening. Job order contracting in this instance is somewhat akin to the annual technology purchase vehicles we bring you every year. In fact, I think we've just brought a bunch in June, and you approve those. In that sense, there's no annual amount associated with the contract. The total annual cost would depend on how much we access the contract. Because the contract has the potential to exceed $25,000 over the course of a fiscal year, this is why we bring it to you in advance, like we do the technology contracts. And I wanna lay out just a little bit about what that might look like. So, in this case, the contract would be geared toward a catalog of construction options with transparent pricing to accomplish relatively minor construction renovation and repair projects. And here, we're thinking about the reopening. So, when we started to think about that, we recognized immediately that we're not staffed or sourced to accomplish all aspects of building preparations and modifications that are needed. So, this is a vehicle that allows us to outsource some of those items in the plan. So, a specific example we're considering are things like building signage, explaining new protocols and requirement, building signage to control social distance, and employee, staff, and student movement, arrows and such, and small work area modifications like plexiglass separators in select areas. Beyond our COVID planning, there may be other ways in which job order contracting may add efficiency and improvement to our facilities management. Because this approach is new to our system, and because we're beginning it now in direct response to the reopening plan, we've considered the best approach to keep you, the board, informed and update, you know, our use whenever we utilize this. And that would be to add a section to the monthly school construction planning report where we would list in detail any time we use job order contracting, any time we undertake that, whether related to the opening or for some sort of general use. And in that way, you have sort of a near-real-time update to all the uses of the contract. You could see how it's being utilized, where those efficiencies might be, and it would be transparent for our public as well, sort of like we do with our professional services contract report. So, that's my best explanation of why I would like to provide that vehicle to Carroll County Public Schools in terms of making it available for those type, that type of work in our response planning.
I think that makes a lot of sense. It gives you the flexibility that you need as we're trying to adjust very quickly to this whole situation. You don't have to wait for an upcoming board meeting to make a presentation and get it approved, as long as we are tracking it on the school construction report, and we're tracking the costs associated with that, so we understand how much we're using it and how much those types of expenses are accumulating.
Right. Well, we would absolutely have to account for that, as we're obligated to stay within our budget. But it will provide some perspective to also what we're spending to respond to all these things. We just brought $225,000 worth of hand sanitizer to you. So, these aren't massive jobs we're talking about. Those would fall elsewhere. But as I illustrated, some of the things, divide, you know, dividers or partition kinds of things and such, that, you know, if we have this avenue to take, we can get it done much more efficiently and quickly, because we just don't have the manpower to do some of those things. Mr. O'Neill or Mr. Prokop, do you want to add anything to that?
I think you summarized it really well. We would not have interest in doing this in larger-scale things, like some school systems have used job order contracting for larger products. We wouldn't do that. You already have consistent ways in which we accomplish those things. But there might be some efficiencies beyond the reopening, and if so, then, as Dr. Lockard said, he tried to come up with a solution where you'd see all uses in almost real-time, meaning every month. And, you know, if you have any questions or concerns, we can turn it off and on at any point. And, you know, I think he made this point well to begin with, but we'll restate it. It's an up-to amount, so there's no set cost, nor is there any obligation. So, you approving this doesn't mean we have to use any particular service that's available under the job order contracting catalog. It just means that it's an option now open to us that we didn't have before.
Right. And I would just add that, you know, that there is a great advantage to having that flexibility, obviously, but there is a... It's nice to know that we, that they will be seeking the use of local contractors, local contracting companies. This isn't, they're not gonna be bringing necessarily folks from outside. They will be working with local folks. The county, Carroll County, just, the government just used it to renovate, used job order contracting to renovate their permits office. They were very pleased with it, talked with their folks over there. They couldn't speak more highly of it and what it, the advantages it gives for work that has to move relatively quickly, because the planning and the construction happens together with one firm. So, what you're doing is you're pulling all those needs together, and you're taking advantage of that. You're taking advantage of that efficiency to expedite the project. So, it's... Also, one last thing is, you know, one of the things we struggle with also is estimating. Again, no financial obligation, but they will work with us to estimate any of our projects that we'd like them to. So, and those can just sit on a shelf until we need them. We could report to the board with what I think will be much more accurate estimates on some of the smaller projects, which are sometimes difficult to get accurate numbers with. So, there's a lot of advantages with going this direction. We're dipping our toes in the water with it, but, you know, it looks good from the outset.
Okay. And Dr. Lockard, these are things, so the CARES money is already spoken for. So, this is, these are things that are reopening-related, they're COVID-19 adjustment-related. So, we should expect that these are gonna have to really be used one-time funds, right, in order to cover some of these?
Yes. Well, we do have funding in our budget, and John, you can get into this a little bit more. There may be situations where we'd have to go to one-time funding. But John, we had talked about that. Do you want to share that piece?
Sure. Early in the fiscal year like this, our budget exists without any pressure. And so, you know, we're just spending out of the operating budget for most of the things you're seeing, unless there's, you know, a specific capital account or something being used. We'd like to get, you know, not that we're not concerned about the fiscal impact. We know that there is one. We know that there's been some money passing through the state as well that's being accounted for. But our focus right now is on developing the plan, getting a plan to you that you can approve, and then opening. And once we clear that hurdle and also gain some experience with these things, usage rates and burn rates on equipment, personal protective equipment, that sort of thing. Sometime early in the fall, we'd really like to sit down with you all and Mr. Hartlove at one of these meetings and begin to take an account of what this is costing us. And as we get a sense of how much longer these certain conditions might exist, we'll be able to forecast a little bit. And at that point, then it may be appropriate to begin to talk about, okay, what would be the source to pay for this? And short of another influx of federal or state aid, which also may not go to these causes, there's plenty of need that money's being spent on. But short of another influx of some other source of funding, the only source you really have is your fund balance. And so, we'd have to have that conversation with you and talk about that at that time. But we'd like to have a better grasp on what the numbers are and might be before having that... The conversation to us would have a lot more meaning at that point than right now.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it with everything else that's going on, so... But now is not necessarily the time that we have to have that discussion.
Right. I don't know if Chris wants to, if he has a specific view on when the more specific right time is, he can feel free.
No, I think you nailed it. I mean, basically, there's too many unknowns right now, is really what it comes down to, is we don't know what, you know, we're early in the fiscal year. We have reopening the school system in kind of an unknown fashion. Similar to last year, we had some expenses that we didn't anticipate, and other expenses that we anticipated that weren't as much. So, there could be some savings, there could be some, obviously, there are gonna be some things that are gonna cost more. As Mr. O'Neill said and Superintendent said, I think as we get a little bit further into the year, we'll have a better feeling for, you know, we'll have some more information that then, that will inform our decisions, and we'll be able to make better decisions with better information.
Okay. So, finally, I'm gonna go to number eight, related, and that deals with emergency procurement. So, I just mentioned, we're identifying much of the supplies and the materials that we believe we need to reopen. And in situations where we have no other option, we're gonna invoke the emergency procurement. And in essence, we go ahead and make the purchase, and then inform you with the next possible award of bid. And that's the case here. This purchase was for the amount of PPE, personal protective equipment, which we believe will be necessary to reopen schools. This doesn't include hand sanitizer, that's something we just brought you, but we want to replenish PPE that we went through and exhausted back in March and April. And whatever we did, whatever we had left and did donate to the Health Department, they are replenishing that back. But we also want to add large amounts of PPE that we know we will now need to be prepared with, stocked with, you know, for the, for opening and dealing with the pandemic, keeping everybody safe. As with the hand sanitizer order, this is another $250,000 purchase that reflects what we need to get schools open. I don't believe it would get us through a full year if we're continuing in the same mode we are right now with COVID-19. But as with the hand sanitizer, we'll also, you know, be looking at how much are we going through, how much are we utilizing? And that would, again, be coming back to you all early fall, determining future purchases as we enter, you know, into the months there. Also, we'll account for the costs and begin to provide those fiscal impact updates, just like we had mentioned previously. Here, we're talking, John, you can share the list of PPE if you'd like, the things that we're talking about beyond masks.
Sure. Masks, gloves, gowns, and not for everyone. Certain jobs require different types and different, even masks alone is an example, where a certain position, such as a nurse, requires a very specific N95 mask, and then our custodial staff might have a different mask. So, this is masks of all types, even some masks to have on hand and youth sizes, so that if a student does show up that, a given day, without a mask, we don't, we don't turn a student away. We just encourage them to have it the next day and give them a disposable mask in that instance. Gloves, gowns, other categories of PPE that I'm probably forgetting right now. But it's a massive amount, but it's, it's, there's a couple of things driving this. The market, we hope, has improved in March and April and May. The market was very tight. We worked with a lot of PPE that we never saw, that sort of, you know, guaranteed, and that's not to knock any vendor. And there just wasn't an availability. And so, the planning committee has taken their best estimate based on the state guidance and the CDC guidance, and what we think is going, more than likely, be in place. And we've tried to, you know, to hedge our bets and make a pretty comprehensive order. So, this is an order, it's a large number, but this is an order for all of those categories, and in some cases, sort of to help families and students. And it's kind of like with the hand sanitizer, it's just to get started. But it is mostly comprehensive. There are a few other specialized areas that we're also looking at, where there'd be an initial order to start the year. We'll have that done soon. But it seems like a huge number, but when you, you know, when you think about an organization of our size and the number of buildings and employees we have, it's not a huge number in that context, so...
Right. Across 25,000-plus students and 44 buildings, it adds up quickly. Again, our thinking here is we want to be prepared, we want to be proactive, get out in front of that. Most of this stuff doesn't have a, you know, three-month shelf life, and so, in the worst-case scenario, everything returns to normal very quickly, and we don't have to purchase these things for a couple of years. That's the best-case scenario, right? And we all hope that happens. But a worst-case scenario would be, we don't have enough of it or adequate supply to get us going and keep us going. So, I'm just trying to be proactive.
And regarding the masks, you mentioned nurses, and I don't want to get into the, to some of the stuff we hear on this, but we're being told the masks, my mask protects all of you, and I understand that. And if you believe that kids don't get this, and kids aren't a high risk from this, let's say I'm a secretary, or a teacher, or assistant, and I'm worried that I'm high-risk. Are any of these masks would protect me as opposed to protect the others? Are they available? Is that something we're getting for employees?
Mr. Carlo, that's a great question, and I, I'm not sure how fully I can answer it. I don't know if Ms. Gomes is on this call or Mr. Streker. I can tell you that in the case of nurses, those are fitted in 95 masks that are not solely to protect you from that nurse, but also to protect that nurse. And so, there's a formal fitting process that they could... That's very different than a mask that I would wear at my desk, or even a mask that a custodian would wear cleaning, you know, just general cleaning. Now, if there's an exposure, a known exposure, and they have to go into a certain room, we would, you know, custodians would put on gloves and other PPE. But Carlo, can you speak to other specific categories?
Yeah, my understanding, John and Mr. O'Neill, is same as you just explained, that nurses are mask-fit-tested. There's a process by which they put a hood on, and they spray different smells to make sure they can't smell them. Very specific, and that's actually done, our, we have nurses trained to do that, our photo nurses do that. So, and that specific-sized mask is only, I think they're certified for a year or two of that size because of different things. So, you know, that's a great question that we could look into further regarding other employees with that. I don't know the availability of the N95 masks as much as the other ones. I think, you know, I know there's different challenges to get different types of masks, and I guess that's the best I can describe, but they're very specific for nurses and people that are knowingly being exposed to a potential student.
We'll get back to you with an official answer from Ms. Gomes, but it, I feel fairly comfortable saying this, just based on so many meetings and so many conversations that she's been part of. We do buy other N95 masks. Ray has some in his shop for maintenance and operations, for dealing with various solvents or chemicals. But those N95 masks are not guaranteed, so to speak, the same way as a fitted mask for a health professional. So, giving them, buying them instead of double-ply cloth coverings, at least, you know, again, we'll confirm this with Felipe and get back to you maybe on the 15th, but buying those masks would not meet some higher threshold than just a two-ply cloth mask would.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, board members, everyone comfortable with those three items that are specifically related to reopening and... Yeah? Okay.
Necessity.
Okay.
Just add to the school list. Yeah, I'm gonna add to my kids' school list, base mask, one for each school.
And then, thank you, board members. And then, we have other, you know, a couple of other fairly standard award-of-bid items. Certainly, available, staff's available to answer any questions you might have about any of the other five items from that list.
Right. Okay. So, board members, we just want to hit them real quickly. I think they are pretty standard. Any questions on the integrated pest management program? The repair of the two cooling towers at North Carroll Middle. Next one, food service paper and detergents. Then, we've got an ice cream and freezers bid. And the last of the others would be the playground equipment. Do we want to make a couple of quick comments about the playground equipment?
Sure, I made some notes here for that. Let me get to that. That is item number seven, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hang on one sec. Yeah, here we go. Friendship Valley, congratulations to them. Their PTA raised funds for... Their their PTA raised funds for their playground. And so these these funds that are listed here are are all from, you know, their their efforts there at the school through their PTA. We do list it here because it becomes a project at one of our schools. We'll make you aware of that, but they'll be excited to have a new playground set up there coming soon.
That is exciting. I just wanted to mention it to make sure folks realize, okay, this isn't really money coming out of our budget, but there's a reason why it's on the award of bids. But that is, it's good times.
Yep.
Yes, it's good to see that. Do we know which playground this is referring to? Is it the the one for the younger kids to the side or?
Mr. Prokop or Mr. Wernick, do either of you happen to know which playground?
I do not. I can find out, you know, and report back on the 15th if you'd like.
Okay, I just wonder. But again, congratulations to them. That's great.
Okay, board members, any questions on any of the other items on the award of bids? So not hearing any significant concern about all of them, we can just take the vote on all eight together. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we can move on to item 6D. I need a motion for the ratification of the master agreement with the administrators and supervisors of Carroll County.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, as you know, we've been in the annual negotiation process with all five of our employee groups this past winter and spring, I guess into a little bit of summer. And that process, much like everything else, was sort of thrown a curveball with the pandemic. But to everyone's credit, everyone stayed the course. You know, our employee groups working with our negotiating team, certainly the board working hard over those months. Everyone has had to adjust expectation and recognize new realities. Not always an easy process, and this year's process included some pandemic-related disappointments that we've, you know, we've we had, you know, other things in mind this spring besides COVID-19 hitting us. But as is typical in the case, I'm pleased to share that our employee groups have remained collaborative partners in the process, and we worked through that, recognizing what we had to deal with along the way. So we're now at the end of that process where we've achieved tentative agreements. And once agreements are reached, we bring them for ratification. And once each of the five employee groups has informed us that their representative employees have ratified those agreements, that's when we bring them to you. So tonight, we're bringing you our A&amp;S units and our educational support professionals unit. They have ratified, and those master agreements are presented to you for your ratification. When all the amendments are made to each master agreement, then we post all those master agreements to our human resources website, where all employees and anyone in the public may review them. So those are the two that we bring you this evening. As we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we've reached tentative agreements. There are other groups and hope to bring those to you at the next meeting or next meetings.
So, board members, any questions about the A&amp;S master agreement? I would just like to add or echo some of your comments, Dr. Lockard, in terms of, you know, that this wasn't necessarily how we were expecting a lot of these discussions to go down this past spring. We were definitely thrown the curveball by COVID-19. But I just do want to once again thank everyone for continuing to to work collaboratively together. I think we came to positive resolution on a lot of things during some pretty challenging times. So I think that's just a testament to to all of the the players and stakeholders that we have. So just pleased that we were able to come to such a positive resolution.
And I think for the public, because we were part of it, this is all but a all-year activity now. But when would you say this started? And how how many months has this been going on? Because again, I think it's great, you know?
I see Ms. Baptist is saying October.
Yes. Yeah, it does typically start in the fall, really picks up in earnest middle of the year. But the the conversations and the and the, you know, ground rules and all those things start to get established pretty early on. So you're right, Mr. Kyler, it pretty much isn't all-year event.
Thank you, everyone.
And we are pleased that we, you know, during all of this, I mean, there was a lot of discussions about budgets and and how COVID-19 was hitting everything, but we were able to still provide for some raises for all of our school system employees. So again, that's a positive outcome. Board members, any questions or comments before we? I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and as part of the agenda discussion in the beginning, we will be skipping over 6E. That will come back for a future board meeting. We'll move to 6F, and I need a motion for the ratification of the master agreement with the Carroll Association of School Employees.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Okay, Dr. Lockard?
And I pretty much surmised the process there when I we kicked off with the A&amp;S group. And so I'm pleased to bring that ratification to you for this group at this point.
Excellent. And so again, basically, this is same comments for for all the units, really. And again, just pleased that we can provide some raises to all of our school employees. And thank you as well for all the collaborative efforts for each of the bargaining units. Any other specific questions to case, board members? All right, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And with that, we will move to 6G. I need a motion for the approval of the termination for convenience of the Winfield HVAC contract.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, this is a matter on which you have received legal advice from Mr. Omealy and discussed with him in closed session. I now bring you a recommendation to terminate for convenience the Winfield HVAC contract with Towson Mechanical Incorporated.
And board members, this is this was we did receive advice under legal counsel in closed sessions, so we will just move directly to taking the vote on this particular item. All those in favor, if I could get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now, item 6H, we need a motion for the approval of the reassignment of the standard solar contract financing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, this action item relates to our solar array at the South Carroll High School campus. The action is the approval of a change to the financing aspect to the existing solar contract. This matter has also been reviewed by Mr. Omealy for legal sufficiency. As you're aware, it's his opinion that there's no issue with this requested approval and that this type of change is not uncommon for such long-term solar agreements. So based on his review, I recommend you approve the reassignment of the financing for the standard solar contract.
Board members, any questions? And just for clarification, there've been a lot of ongoing discussions with commissioners and various community members about a different solar project, and I just want to state for the record that this is very separate and distinct from that issue.
Not related at all, right? This is similar to like when your mortgage company sells your mortgage to another lender and you get that notification in the mail. And so as I noted, this this happens time to time in contracts like this.
All right, then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And that concludes the action items section, section seven for public participation. I'm happy to say that we did actually have someone take advantage of the second public participation section tonight, but we had already shifted over at the 6:30 timeframe that we had publicized. So I'm assuming that we do not have any other folks looking to speak for public participation.
No.
Okay? And so we can move directly to section eight for the discussion items. And we have one item, which is the NFHS streaming athletics. Dr. Lockard?
Right, so board members, I'm excited. We got a couple of folks on with us this evening for this item. We brought this proposal idea to you several months back. I think it might have been in the fall of of 19, maybe it was maybe it was early 2020. And it was around the concept that several other counties in Maryland using of working with a group that livestreams games for us, events for us. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that we honored our existing work with the CMC. And Richard Turner has been a great partner and the CMC with us. In fact, you know, Ms. Herbert, you were talking earlier this evening about our our modified graduations. Well, the CMC had a huge part in helping us tape and record and and capture those ceremonies. And so they're great partners. So we worked extensively with them to make sure that we could sort of do this in a coexisting fashion. And I I thought we were going to have some folks from CMC. I'm not sure if we do, but Ms. McCabe, I'm going to, yes, we do. There's Mr. Turner.
Oh, he just popped up. Mr. Turner.
Good, good.
Welcome.
Aye.
Thank you for joining us. Ms. McCabe, I'll turn it over to you.
So as Dr. Lockard said, we first introduced this to you back in January, where we presented on the NFHS Network's offers and what they're able to do for our local school systems. Since then, we have collaborated with other leaders throughout the state in other districts. We've collaborated with Ed Omealy, and we've reached out to Mr. Richard Turner, one of our great partners with the CMC. And so tonight, we have a quick update for you from Mr. Eric King, our director of high schools, and Mr. Michael Duffy, our supervisor of athletics. But before I turn it over to Mr. Duffy, I just want to again thank Mr. Turner for his partnership with us, especially in the graduation ceremonies that we were able to videotape and get out there for our community. We definitely couldn't have done it without you. So, Richard, do you want to say a few words about that?
Well, absolutely. Thank you. And Board President Savigny and Board members of Lieutenant Lockard and staff, you know, we're really pleased to have this opportunity. And joining me joining me tonight is CMC's Board Chair Gerard Harp. I think he may have already left, but I know that also our Vice Chair Teresa Bethune is also here. And they're they're here to demonstrate the importance of our partnership as well between CCPS and the CMC. Among those of the focus tonight is our partnership in promoting and streaming media coverage for high school sports. So we wanted to express our deep appreciation to the board and staff in considering the impact on CMC's media coverage on our Central Maryland Sports Network or CM Sportsnet. Many thanks to Michael Duffy, as he worked closely with me to learn on of our concerns and to find a way to resolve all of those concerns. He went further to make sure that we would have access to the footage that was created with the NFHS Network. So this is system, this would allow us to even expand our coverage even further because of our limitations from budget and just volunteers. So and then from my contact with fellow CMCs across the country, this might be one of the best agreements I've heard of in the country. So I think it really stands out, and it's really because of the staff's outstanding work as well as the push to make sure that all of that could happen. Our CM Sportsnet has continued coverage even when there hasn't been sports with our profiles of a season lost. CMC volunteers have interviewed coaches and student athletes about the impact of COVID-19 on the on the spring sports season. And those episodes are airing now on our channels and our and streaming online. I also want to recognize our dedicated production team, including students, interns, volunteers, and staff who make our coverage possible. In particular, thanks to Bob Lord for helping raise awareness of our on our concerns and helping to find an excellent win-win solution. So again, I thank you for your support and willingness to make sure our local sports coverage could be sustained. And if the board desires, I'd come to you with a presentation reporting on our progress at some future meeting. It was also a pleasure to be part of the coverage of graduation. It was very heartwarming, and I have to say the dedication of staff to be there for the many hours was very touching. I happened to be there at Manchester Valley when the Twins crossed the stage, as a matter of fact, making sure that our coverage was there. It was very touching, and I got to say that I don't know if many of you got to see it, but the the parents, from my perspective, the parents and the students had one-on-one attention from staff. So it was very touching to see that we could be a part of that and make sure that we could celebrate the graduation in a year that was kind of kind of kind of miserable. So thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Mr. Turner, for 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 just your remarks on that. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Duffy to just go over once again the fundamentals of what we're talking about with the NFHS Network. And then Mr. King will have some of the details, and then we'll take any questions you may have. Mr. Duffy?
Good evening, board members. To kind of summarize what the NFHS Network would provide for us, it would be two Pixel Lock cameras in each in each of our schools, one in the gymnasium and one in the on the stadium field, which is would also which would permit us to stream athletic events to the NFHS Network. What it it would require athletic directors to program ahead of time, the the streaming so that it would be automatically done. The camera and the software allows it to follow the action, that does not require an individual to be standing with a camera at each and every event, trying to make sure that they didn't miss the fake handoff in football. So it it also permits for streaming for people who aren't able to attend the events, which right now, that's a bit of a question mark, because as I look, the Maryland Department of Health's most recent guidelines back from June 10th say, high school and college athletics may resume sports gatherings and events, but may not be open to spectators or the general public. Now, that's almost a month old, but that's still what we're dealing with at the moment. So it does it does become an issue. So having an opportunity and an ability to stream an event becomes pretty essential for us, we think. It also permits long-term help. We would be joining with Anarundel, Baltimore County, Cecil County, and Montgomery County so far in the state of Maryland with regard to coming fully online with the NFHS Network as far as all of our membered schools. As far as people would buy a subscription, but the subscription is not restricted to only that only one of our schools, for example, a parent at Liberty High School can watch anything on the NFHS Network throughout the country, not just Liberty High, not just Liberty High School's gymnasium or Liberty High School's stadium field. So there's a lot of opportunity there, and we're really excited about partnering with them as well as maintaining our partnership with the with the CMC. And Mr. Turner's been very welcoming and helpful with getting everything together, and I thank him for that.
Mr. King?
Yeah, and Mr. Duffy, thank you. And Mr. Turner, also is a pleasure to work with you on the graduation. You guys were awesome and professional. Mr. Duffy's really our expert on this, and I'll just add, I was very excited about this opportunity when we did the presentation in January. And obviously, who knew what was to come? But in the short term, with the unknowns about, you know, allowing spectators into athletics, et cetera, I just feel like this is the perfect time to enter into an agreement like this. But then in the long term, it really brings us into the modern era that folks with a subscription will be able to view games, like Mr. Duffy said, around the country. And certainly for those of us, as we all have had to work from home and all these other things, when someone's, you know, has to work late, they may be able to still catch their kid's game on their kid's game on their phone conceivably instead of maybe not being able to make it to Liberty from the Francis Scott Key area, et cetera. So the opportunities and the benefits to our community, I think, are outstanding, especially with, you know, as many families are spread around the country. If Grandma and Grandpa are in another state, they may never miss a game for their granddaughter, you know, which I think is just awesome, as we, we all realize, I think, after the spring sports season, how much we miss getting to see our own kids and our school's kids and just our athletes in general perform. So I'm very excited about this and was thrilled when Mr. Duffy first sort of brought me up to speed on what this was.
So board members, do you have any questions at this point?
I have a question.
Go ahead, sorry.
I have a question concerning the advertising piece and how that will work.
Sure, I think I can address that. What it permits is ad space on the screen. I believe you can put something in three of the four corners of the screen for the season, and they can rotate them through as well. But each season would be a different advertising, so there'd be a different advertising opportunity in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. And all advertising would be in line with, with existing board policy. It wouldn't go anything beyond that. Does that help?
Yes, that's helpful. And what's the fee associated with that? I mean...
With what?
Is there any fee for the advertisers or?
Yes, ma'am, we would, but the school system or the schools, however we work that out, would recoup that money. It would be a fundraiser for the school or the school system. It would not, it does not go to the NFHS Network. We would just need to supply the information to be included in the screen.
So each school would set up its own set of advertisers or?
We have not worked through all those details yet. I think that's something that we're going to look for. I'm very big on equity across all of our schools, so I want to ensure that we're not fa, whatever we set up is going to be in equitable format.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So following up with Dr. Dorsey then on the ads and other things, so this is the discussion item tonight. What happens moving forward? What's the next step and, you know, what's the timeframe, et cetera?
At this point, we would, after the meeting tonight, we would be working with Ed Omealy and working with the NFHS Network as well as with Nancy Cogner to finalize the contract and then move forward.
This couldn't come at a better time, but Mr. Turner, I want to thank you. I know you were very concerned, and I was very concerned because Carroll Media has been a very important partnership with Carroll County Board of Education. And if you're happy, I'm happy.
Thank you very much. We're happy.
Okay.
Yeah, I would definitely like to echo that. I feel that this is really a double big win, right? It's a shining example of the community partnerships, and thank you for being here, Mr. Turner, and thank you for all your involvement and guidance and collaboration as we're working through the concerns. I think we've gotten to a really great ends. And the second win is the COVID-19 situation, the fact that we now have an alternative to in-person attendance for some of these sporting events. I think, as you said, Ms. Herbert, it couldn't have come at a better time, so...
It's unbelievable.
But just in general, I would love to hold this up as a shining example of what, what Carroll County community partnerships can do together when we band together and, you know, what we can accomplish is truly amazing. So thank you, Mr. Turner, and all the staff members for making this happen.
Appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then I think we have, we have come to the end of our new business. We've gotten to the unfinished business, new business section. Before moving on to that, though, announcing the upcoming meetings, I just wanted to say, you know, this was our first attempt at a hybrid meeting, and I want to thank staff and particularly Carrie and Bob and Brenda for making this happen, and it went quite seamlessly, I think.
Pat in the booth.
And Pat in the booth. Thank you, thank you, Pat. And I think, you know, it's a shining example of us, so we can lead by example as a group, and I really appreciate the opportunity to make this happen, and it went very well. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in having this go so smoothly tonight. I imagine that we will be keeping this hybrid format for the next couple of meetings, which we can announce now. Before I do that, does anybody have any other new or unfinished business that they'd like to bring up?
I'd like to just mention along with what you just said, yeah, thanks for making this meeting happen tonight, the public comment, and I'm so glad we could do this. I think it was 35 to maybe 40 people different on this meeting tonight. There's a few of you that I think are still on that might not have had anything to say, so you have way more patience than I do, but thank you. And then along with our camera system, I'm going to do a brief commercial. While I'm here at this meeting today, my mother turned 89, and so I wish her a happy birthday, although she'd never watch this, but she does say she's still not quite sure how I'm going to turn out, but she's going to stay on.
We don't know how you're going to turn out either, Mr. Turner.
That is true, Donna. Yes, I'm still worried about him in certain aspects.
All right. Anything else, board members?
Stay positive. It's going to be a long journey, and we're going to do the best we can.
Stay positive. That's a, that's a good message. And, you know, we do have a meeting next week where that's going to be probably a pretty long and grueling one to get through everything, so...
It will be our update meeting, presenting, as we said, you know, draft plan to the board, survey to follow. Today is July 8th. School starts in Carroll County on September 8th. That's two months away.
You know, I've seen a lot of things in over 40 years. I've seen superintendents go, board members go, teachers go, school closures, but wow, we have not had anything like this. And it affects everyone. I, I mean, everyone in every community and every family, and it has, you know, I've seen things happen that have only affected certain areas, but this has affected everyone.
Yes, it has.
But I will, I will use Dr. Lockard's motto, stay positive, because together it's possible.
Yep, we've got to. We don't have a choice.
All right, and with that, we, at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 15th, we do have our board updates meeting, as we just discussed. Only the board members will convene as necessary in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And Dr. Lockard, that meeting will not have citizen participation, is that correct?
I was, I was recommending that we would have citizen participation
That we would have, okay.
For each of the update meetings. I see that as another avenue for our public to continue to weigh in. So same model as tonight, whether folks decide to come sign up, as we did this evening in person, one at a time, or we had folks utilize having their comments posted to the website corresponding to this meeting under, under public comment. We can continue to accommodate both of those.
Okay, so then for each of these four upcoming meetings that we're going to announce, there will be citizen participation in the similar format that we had this evening?
That's correct. With, I would say the exception being that at the update meetings, we'd have one time period at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. So we'll advertise that. Next week, our meeting begins at 5:00. That's when the public comment period would be, right out of the gate, and then we'd get to the planning piece for our regular board meetings. So the next regular board meeting is August something where we
12.
Handle the business of the board. We would do the same thing we did this evening with a shortly after 5:00 and then a 6:30 timeframe, because in our regular board meetings, we have space for two public comment periods. So we'll do the, for the updates, we'll do it right at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, so citizen participation will take place right around 5:00 PM for each of Wednesday, July 15th, Wednesday, July 29th, also at 5:00 PM, and Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. And then we'll have the, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is the Wednesday after that, Wednesday, August 12th, 2020, and that will start at 5:00 PM. We'll have citizen participation shortly after 5:00 PM, and then another one in the 6:30 timeframe.
Yes, and we'll make sure Ms. Gaddis and Ms. Bowers will push out a notification that explains that to everybody so that they know if they want to come do that, when their time would be, for what meeting.
Just a question, so when will the second surveys be released? Will it be before the July 15th meetings or afterwards?
It'll be Thursday, the 16th. Davanchi, thank you. And Davanchi mentioned earlier in her comments, she and Mr. Alisakis worked on an updated student survey to reach more students. We've, we've worked on a revised second survey, a little more specific with a lot more open-endedness for our broader community. So the idea then was we want, let folks hear some of the board discussion and some of the thinking that happens next Wednesday, and then that Thursday, we'd open it up for another week to 10 days for responses.
And Dr. Lockard, I think at the June 24th updates meeting that we had, we had also talked about the last survey that went out and that the board would like to see, you know, the expected survey that was going to go out and that we could potentially have some feedback on that, right? So will the, will there be time to adjust if there are some additional things that we as a board decide that we'd like to see in the survey at that July 15th meeting?
Yeah, so I sent the board a copy of the draft of that next one already, and certainly solicited feedback from the board. I would think, you know, after that Wednesday afternoon-evening meeting, you know, by the next day, close of business, we'd want to get that feedback, because I don't want to wait too much longer and make sure we get that, that push back out.
No, I agree. I don't, I don't want to hold it up, but I just wanted to make sure that we had the chance to provide that feedback at the meeting on the 15th and that there would still be time to adjust it for it to go out on the 16th.
I'm sorry, yes, that was the original plan. You're correct. I was interpreting your comment wrong, but yes, we are going to provide that overview, a brief overview of what we're planning to send. We'll take any feedback there as well, so we can do that publicly, yes.
All right, board members, anything else? Davanchi, did we hit it?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Herbert? Seconded by Ms. Bataglia. All right, all those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, and we will see you next Wednesday night at 5:00 PM.